...being sent out that the area was returning to the Wild West, that this was a payback for this previous shooting that had taken place in Mar Vista Gardens. Somewhat of a siege mentality that was being portrayed in these emails and clearly misinformation.
In both cases, the victim was an alleged gang member and was shot at multiple times. And in both cases, police say, the suspects were Hispanic males in their late teens. But they believe the two fatal shootings are not related.
What ruled us out was from the very beginning, the history of the victims, the locality. Although they're both probably gang-related, they're two different gangs. There's no relation between the victims.
Police say there were 15 to 20 people in Mar Vista when the shooting occurred, but only one witness. And at Abbott Kinney, they say, out of 100 people, only one credible witness stepped forward.
If there's anybody watching this who was there either on either location and saw the incident happen, come forward now while the investigations are hot, the trails are hot.
But police say new witnesses have since contacted them, and they hope one of them makes the difference in cracking these cases. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
A female bystander was also shot in the Abbott Kinney incident but survived. Anyone with information is asked to call 1-877-LAWFUL. That's 1-877-529-3855. When water and power rates go up, senior citizens and low-income customers are hit the hardest. Patrick Rody tells us what officials are doing to make sure senior citizens can afford their power bills.
When the city council approved rate hike increases for water and electricity earlier this year, Southern District Councilmember Richard Alarcon introduced a motion to create a low-income oversight board to help make sure seniors and low-income ratepayers can keep their water and power flowing. Cost-saving programs already exist for senior citizens and low-income customers, but Councilmember Alarcon is concerned not enough of those eligible know about them, so he held a meeting to get the word out.
We're talking about senior citizens, disabled people, people of lower income who are in need of what this has been defined as an essential service. You cannot live in a decent fashion in Los Angeles without having electricity in your home.
The city wants to make sure people don't have to make the choice between keeping the power on and keeping food on the table.
They are spending their very tight dollars on food, clothing, other essential services, including medical care, and that is our priority.
We are totally in favor of this rate reduction. The number of seniors, I'm sure everybody's aware that the population of seniors is increasing, and with the economy being as it is and seniors being on fixed incomes, it would be extremely difficult for them to accommodate this rate increase.
The rate hikes approved by the council earlier this year are expected to generate around $270 million annually. The average monthly increase for customers is $7.25. I'm Patrick Rody for LA this week.
To learn more about the low-income and senior citizen discount, call the LADWP at 1-800-DIAL-DW P or log on to www.ladwp.com. And helping residents make ends meet, whether it's seniors or working folks, is part of the city's larger plan to fight poverty. Patrick Rody continues with a look at how our mayor, along with other U.S. mayors, is taking the issue of poverty to a national level.
The U.S. Conference of Mayors met in Watts for a forum on poverty in America. The mayors came from all over the country to talk about ways to make poverty a central issue in the current debate over our nation's economy.
Forty million human beings live in poverty in America. Over 13 million children go to bed every night in America, poverty-stricken, malnourished and hungry. That is an incredible tragedy. Poverty is on the rise and the severity of poverty is on the rise.
Seventy-six percent of the children in L.A. Unified are at or below the poverty level. That is over half a million of the 13 million that you heard were in poverty, live right here in L.A.
In America's cities, there is a crisis. We know that people are working more and making less, that foreclosures are on the rise and home values are falling, that unemployment and poverty rates reach new heights each month.
No matter which candidate wins this November's presidential election, whether it's Senator John McCain or Senator Barack Obama, the mayors of this forum want to make sure that come January, the next administration makes tackling the issue of poverty in America a top priority.
The fact of the matter is, whichever candidate wins, it is very, very important that the American working poor, working people and middle class not be left behind.
This forum gives us an opportunity to present to the candidates an action plan, a down payment, if you will, on the many proposals that we have put together to address poverty in America.
Those proposals include things like updating the way the federal government measures poverty, to come up with a more realistic national poverty level, creating a new cabinet-level position to deal with poverty, expanding the earned income tax credit, and promoting universal preschool programs. In Watts, I'm Patrick Rody for LA this week.
Ponds at one popular park are drained, kids go fishing downtown, and how the city is recognizing Deaf Awareness Month. Rasha Goel has these stories and more in City Beat.
A popular location for weddings, photos and picnics, Avril Park is seeing some changes. In compliance with the city's new water use regulations, most of the ponds and falls at the park have been drained and will remain dry until further plans to repair the area. The lower three ponds will be kept for wildlife, but will also eventually undergo improvements. And fishing in downtown, yes, it's possible. Lincoln Park recently hosted a youth fishing derby for children ages five to 15, giving youth from urban areas an opportunity to experience fishing. The free event provided kids with poles, reels and bait.
I think it's really neat that they have events like this for people. It's really fun.
The event was co-sponsored by the Department of Recreation and Parks with Councilmember Ed Reyes, the Daniel Hernandez Youth Foundation and other city partners. A benefit poetry marathon is helping to keep doors open for Avenue 50 Studio in Highland Park, which was burglarized in June of this year. The morning-to-midnight poetry jam featured poetry reading by over 60 writers from across the region.
This is actually the support from the poetry community to help us in putting this together.
The benefit helped raise over $2,000, which will go towards valuable computer equipment and other items that were stolen. Avenue 50 Studio is located in Councilmember Ed Reyes's district. And in honor of Deaf Awareness Month, Councilmember Tony Cardenas recently honored many deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals for their significant work. Among them was Dr. Robert R. Devilla, the first Latino president of Gallaudet University, who has been deaf since he was eight years old. Councilmember Cardenas designated October as Deaf Awareness Month in 2003. There are approximately 900,000 residents who are hearing impaired in Los Angeles County. With City Beat, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
And next week, we'll take you to Deaf Fest 2008, a festival aimed at raising awareness about the deaf community. Last week, we followed some kids from the city's L.A.'s Best After School program as they learned about dining etiquette and healthy eating. Today, in part two of our two-part segment, L.A.'s Best Chef, we follow the kids to the renowned Grace Restaurant where they learn the secrets of fine dining from one of the nation's top chefs. Here's Anna Marcos.
This is no run-of-the-mill after-school outing. The kids at L.A.'s Best are about to get the best that L.A. fine dining cuisine has to offer. And Chef Neil Fraser of Grace Restaurant plays host.
Tomatoes. They come in all shapes and colors and sizes.
Some exhibit perfect manners. After all, they've already gotten a lesson on fine dining etiquette in a previous class. The Gourmand with his elbows on the table may have forgotten a lesson or two, but, well, there is a learning curve.
I was really impressed with their manners. They were very grateful and said thank you very much and a lot of times.
Squash flowers, anyone? Of course, trying new stuff can sometimes be a challenge. But the students warm up with the appetizer, heirloom tomatoes freshly bought at the local farmer's market, mixed with fresh figs and Italian burrata cheese. It's the kind of food these at-risk kids may have never seen, much less tasted before. But they are game to try it all.
I think I would have an issue throwing some of these things in my mouth, you know? If I brought a rambutan to a class and said, "Eat it," and I had never heard of it, and I looked at it, I'm like, "I might eat that." And these kids are just like, they're, you know, they're sponges.
Part of learning to eat gourmet is seeing how it all comes together in the kitchen. The main course, filet of beef, is served with French green beans.
The grain on the bottom looks just like rice. It's called farro.
But dessert by any other name, whether it's gourmet or not, tastes just as sweet, especially today. On the menu, ripe peaches with shortcake, raspberries and ice cream.
My favorite food that I tasted today was the peach.
I would like to teach my mom, like, making the dessert.
It's a safe bet the kids will be taking home not only a lot of appreciation, but at least one new recipe. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
A multi-sports complex and recreation center is coming soon to the heart of Little Tokyo. It's been talked about for years, but now city leaders have given the green light to actually build it. As Gil Reyes reports, organizers are thinking big.
What's huge in Little Tokyo? Its passion for sumo wrestling, of course, also kendo and other martial art forms, and its love for intramural basketball. These activities cross generational lines, blending the old with the new, like Little Tokyo itself.
And all of these places are looking for a venue where they can do practice and have tournaments. So we think it'll be a huge draw to Little Tokyo and to downtown.
Coming soon, a 35,000-square-foot, two-story sports complex to be built just south of the Little Tokyo Library. It'll have four basketball courts that could be used for volleyball, a high-end community gymnasium that organizers hope will also host Asian-themed sporting events.
We're thinking that this facility can become the premier martial arts tournament center for the whole United States.
During 14 years of talks, the city wouldn't budge. It had rejected plans to build the center on First Street North near the Japanese-American National Museum after local veterans and art enthusiasts protested. But the city finally said okay after the project moved a few blocks away behind this fence atop a soon-to-be-built parking garage.
The parking structure will be for city use, but we will have a shared use agreement. We have a memorandum of understanding how we share that facility together.
The complex will be built here on what is now a vacant lot on Los Angeles Street between Second and Third in downtown. It's expected to be completed within four years. In Little Tokyo, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The Little Tokyo Service Center is building the gymnasium. The estimated price tag for the gym, about $15 million. Our city guy, Andrew Tarr, is still on break. Filling in for him is Patrick Rody with this week's list of things to do.
It takes a big man to fill the shoes of Andrew Tarr. They couldn't find that man, so they settled for me. I'm Patrick Rody with a look at this week's things to do. On October 12th, check out the Taste of Encino Street Fair. This year's festival will include three music stages, a storytelling stage, a folk dance area, and a traditional song circle. The three music stages will include the Bluegrass Association of Southern California Stage, the California Traditional Music Society Stage, and the Showcase Stage. The featured performers on the California Traditional Music Society Stage will be Klesmer Juice. They'll be performing fresh renditions of traditional Jewish soul music, and they've performed locally at venues such as the Skirball Center. They'll be appearing thanks to a grant from the Los Angeles County Arts Commission. The Taste of Encino Street Fair is made possible by a grant from the Los Angeles City Department of Cultural Affairs. Also on October 12th, the Bretton Woods Westwood Symphony Orchestra Association and Maestro Alvin Mills invite you to celebrate their 56th anniversary. At 3:00 p.m., pianist Sylvia Olivier will perform Beethoven's Piano Concerto Number Four. By the way, in case you were wondering, Beethoven's first and middle names were Ludwig Von. If you win a bar bet with that piece of trivia, you can thank me the next time you see me. For more information on this concert, call 310-829-3149. If you've been watching the presidential debates, you'll want to check out the play The Rivalry. It's about the granddaddy of all political debates between Lincoln and Douglas back in 1858. David Strathairn and Paul Giamatti stars Abraham Lincoln and Stephen Douglas, candidates for the U.S. Senate from Illinois. This play is based on a true story, and dialogue is taken directly from the transcripts of those historic debates. The Rivalry is playing at the Skirball Cultural Center, October 15 through the 19th. For more information, call 310-827-0889 or log on to the L.A. Theater Works website at www.latw.org. Not to be confused with this show, which is also known as LATW. And the Savor the West Wine, Whiskey and Song Series continues at the Autry National Center on October 18th with a beer tasting event from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Sample beers from Angel City Brewing and enjoy the music of the Mary White Band. Not to be confused with the average white band. I hear the Mary White Band is above average. Tickets are $40. $30 for Autry National Center members. For more information, call the Autry Center at 323-667-2000. I'm Patrick Rody, and I'm not the city guy. That would be Andrew Tarr, and he'll be back next week with more things to do.
And to get to some of the suggested things-to-do locations downtown, you may want to hop on a new tourist bus serving downtown L.A. Rasha Goel takes us on a ride.
As city leaders continue to revitalize the downtown area, they're collaborating with a local tour bus company to help promote tourism in a city with unique and historical attractions.
From Little Tokyo to the historic core, to the Fashion District, now downtown has something for everybody who comes here.
You have a lot more activity, a lot more nightlife, a lot more places to visit. It's no longer a place to avoid. We're going to see parts of the city that people don't see often.
Starline Tours, a tour bus company, is on board and offering the Downtown L.A. Hop-on-Hop-off service, a first-time service which allows visitors and locals to experience the city at their leisure.
People can get on it and get off on it, get off it at any time they want through the services that we have, through the loops that we got.
The new bus tour will offer 13 stops, which allows guests to hop on or hop off in downtown L.A. for a 24- or 48-hour period from the time they begin to use their tickets. The service will be in conjunction with the existing Hollywood hop-on-hop-off, using a shuttle service between Hollywood and downtown L.A. The new service makes it possible for visitors to experience Los Angeles, from Beverly Hills to downtown L.A.
And they'll be able to get off and on the bus, and another bus will come by every 30 minutes and pick them up, and take them around, see the different sights of Los Angeles rather than having to try to find their own way around.
So now we get to see the brighter historical side of downtown. So that's pretty cool.
Fair start at $30, depending on the type of package you want to purchase. In downtown, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Tickets for the tours can be purchased through the Los Angeles Convention Center. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week. L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for Friday, October 10th, 2008. We're here in the John Ferraro Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to welcome members of the public that are here today and those of our viewing audience on Channel 35 through the city's cable system on L.A. City View, Channel 35. We have these meetings broadcast live on the cable system as well as rebroadcast in the evenings. Welcome our evening viewers for our rebroadcast as well. If you're not close to a television, you can always catch our council meetings online by visiting our city's homepage at lacity.org. And there are links on the left side that'll navigate you towards live streaming video of our council meetings. We also archive any of our past council meetings so that you can reference those as well. Finally, you can always use your telephone. 213-621-CITY is the number that you call. That's 213-621-CITY. And through that, you can listen into not only the council meetings, but any of our committee meetings, which are broadcast through the telephone system as well. Our agendas are made public 72 hours in advance, 24 hours in advance for our special meeting agenda items. And all items are open to public hearing. That happens either in committee, and if it's already had a public hearing in committee, an item requires a council member to re-trigger that, or they are done here in council chambers if they've not yet had a public hearing in committee. And if you'd like to be heard on any of those items, please fill out a speaker card. Those are available in the back. Or for those of you in our Van Nuys City Council Chambers, where we're able to watch you remotely, you can fill out a card there and hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms at one of either side of the aisles here. And the sergeant will take that from you, and then we can make sure we get your card into the mix of the meeting. Fridays, we usually have special presentations for notable dates, months, individuals, organizations that have made an impact on the city of Los Angeles. This Friday is no different. We have some very exciting presentations coming up. There are six of them scheduled for today. So we will begin shortly. Again, want to thank the council members who are here pursuing to council rules on time. Those members are Councilmember Grul, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Wesson and Councilmember Zine. We need 10 members to constitute a quorum, so we're still awaiting five more members. The following council members are now late. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilmember Wezar, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosenthal, Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Weiss. Mr. Lavange is excused today. We'll begin our presentation shortly. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and we'll begin in about two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to acknowledge our council president, Eric Garcetti, for our first presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. A very good morning to you and to the council. And we're here today to kick off the annual commemoration of Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. You've seen the banners, you've probably heard some of the ads and seen them. Each year, we use this month to really highlight what goes on all year long, one of the most horrific forms of violence, that which happens in our own homes, at the hands of people the victim knows and even loves. This year, the city's Domestic Violence Task Force has conducted a study on violence in teen relationships. The theme each year changes. I think last year was workplace violence, if I'm not mistaken. Was that two years ago? Multicultural was last year. But this year, we're really focused on one of the most unspoken forms of domestic violence that occurs, that with our young people, teen dating violence. The study that the Domestic Violence Task Force conducted results are very disconcerting. Teen dating violence is all-too-common phenomenon that often goes undernoticed and underreported, and studies have shown that one in five teen relationships are abusive. These relationships cut across socioeconomic lines, ethnicity, geography, of course, age and even gender lines. Unlike abusive adult relationships, abusive teen relationships happen to both boys and girls on very similar levels, both as victims and perpetrators. Nearly 10% of high school students have reported being physically hurt by their boyfriend or girlfriend, and only about half of adolescents aged 11 to 14 know what a violent relationship looks like. Why this is so critical is these seeds that are planted, these seeds of violence, early on in young people's lives, often become, unfortunately, much larger problems when they get older. They continue to perpetuate the violence or to accept the violence as something that is just common, something that they have to accept. Prevention and intervention at that young age is the answer, not just to reducing dating violence, but to reducing the cycle of violence in the city of Los Angeles. And so educating our youth is really key to this. The city of Los Angeles tends to be the forefront of teen violence prevention and intervention. But we want to, this year, set our sights on working with LAUSD to expand violence prevention programs in our schools, in the after-school programs that we fund here in the city, and to train and to educate our officers to recognize the signs of teen dating violence. I want to thank the Los Angeles City's Domestic Violence Task Force for their advocacy, not just this month, but every month of the year. And I want to thank council members for your great appointees who make this the finest domestic violence task force in the country. Let's give them a round of applause. They're all right here behind me. And we also honored in the forecourt with the mayor and our city attorney, Rocky Delgado, the Los Angeles Police Department honorees for their hard work. And I'd like to ask them if they would just stand and, I guess they're mostly standing, but if they'd wave, we'll try to get out of the way. And if we can thank the officers who are the heroes who have intervened and stopped so many cases of domestic violence and transformed Angelenos' lives. Let's give them a great round of applause. And I also want to acknowledge and thank Verizon Wireless, and once again, for sponsoring the Hope Line program. Anybody who's out there in the city of Los Angeles or watching this, who has an old cell phone, come into locations throughout City Hall or our field offices, our district offices, all have boxes in them, so that you can clear out that junk in your drawer, an old cell phone. But that old cell phone can literally be refurbished to save someone's life, to make sure that that is their hope line, their way out of a domestic violence situation, and their way on a path towards turning their life around. I want to thank our emcee. We've had just a great, great tradition. Colleen Williams and now Patrick Healy of CNBC have just been wonderful supporters of this Awareness Month each year. And Patrick was our emcee out in the forecourt, and I'd like to turn it over to him to introduce a couple people who will say some words as well. Patrick Healy.
Council President Garcetti, thank you very much. And Colleen Williams was very disappointed she could not be here today, and I am flattered that you allowed me to be part of your program. And a very full program it is, so I'm not going to take very much time. But a public service announcement has been produced that deals with this issue of domestic violence, specifically as it relates to teens. And is that, is the video ready? Are we going to be able to take a look at it? Okie doke. It was produced by Debbie Biederman and Robert Manciero, and again, it highlights the issue of teen dating violence. Let's take a look.
Approximately one in five female high school students report being physically and/or sexually abused by a dating partner.
One in three teens report knowing a friend or peer who has been hit, punched, kicked, slapped or physically hurt by their dating partner. Gay, lesbian and bisexual teens involved in same-sex relationships are just as likely to experience dating violence.
Patterns of dating violence behavior often start early and carry through into adult relationships.
And only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever told anyone.
Stop the abuse before it starts.
Talk about it.
What better advice is there than that? Ladies and gentlemen, the Chair of the Domestic Violence Task Force, Carol Tantow.
Good morning. I would like to take this opportunity... Excuse me? Okay. Beepers. The Domestic Violence Task Force, each year, awards an award in honor of Marjorie Browdy. And she is actually the founder of the Domestic Violence Task Force. And this award recognizes the person's collaborative abilities in the field of domestic violence. There are many people in this room today who are very passionate about domestic violence, but how to make it work in working with others is really a special skill. And to that end, we have named Leah Aldridge as our nominee for this award this year, and I'd like her to say a few words.
First off, I want to say thank you to the city of Los Angeles Domestic Violence Task Force, Los Angeles City Council, and to Dr. Marjorie Browdy for having the foresight to, in her collaborative spirit, pull people together and get them to focus on very critical issues affecting homes, communities, and broader society, and our culture. I want to say thank you to Verizon Wireless for their critical corporate support for these efforts, and I appreciate their leadership, and we're really kind of hoping that other corporations and businesses will follow their lead. And I want to say thank you to the thousands and thousands of young people over the years whom I've had an opportunity to learn and grow from and work with, specifically around teaching young people and adults about young people's lives, experiences, and what it means to be engaged in healthy relationships, and how to mitigate against those factors that challenge those opportunities for healthy relationships, and that create violence in their dating experiences, in their young, formative years, because it's something that they can carry with them throughout their lifetime. I'm also very happy to hear that the DV Task Force and City Council and the largest city of Los Angeles is interested in supporting collaborative efforts. And as I have been involved with the Los Angeles Commission on Assaults Against Women and Peace Over Violence, now named Peace Over Violence for nearly 20 years, I recognized a long time ago that I could not do it by myself, that our team, we could not singularly, individually educate all of the young people, and their families, and their teachers, and so on, people who touch their lives on a daily basis. We could not do it alone. And so it became critically important that we have opportunities to present to places like City Council and garner support at the policy level. It became important that we involve law enforcement and medical professionals, so that when they see young people coming to their office, that they ask questions about how are your dating relationships going along? And then working with teachers, so that when they see young people in hallways and administrators, that they recognize those warning signs as not just kids being kids, but that they actually probe deeper and recognize the signs. So specifically, I just really want to put a pitch out there for some work that Peace Over Violence has been doing for a number of years, which is developing policy specifically for LA Unified School District, but could certainly be adopted at other school districts around the county and in the state. It was a policy that was developed in conjunction with the state Attorney General's Office that would train teachers and administrators and other employees in school districts on recognizing warning signs, and teaching them on how to intervene, and how to create protocols and strategies, and reducing dating violence, dating violence opportunities, and promote healthy relationships among young people. I would be happy to make any of that information available to the City Council, and I'm just pitching your support, because we can't do it alone. And so we need policymakers to support good policy around how to best serve as many, as large a population of young people as possible, and in supporting efforts like this, we do that much better job at preventing dating violence being carried into the future for our young people today. So thank you again for this award. I'm very appreciative, and thanks again.
Have a great day. And I'd like to just make one comment in closing. I apologize to Jan Perry and Dennis Zine and Wendy Gruel, who were kind enough to attend our event outside, and we ran out of time. So next time, maybe we need two hours. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the three of you, and Councilmember Weiss, who joined us outside, all champions in a council which has really championed this issue, but I'm sure we'll hear a few things from them.
We do. Councilmember Cardenas, followed by Councilmember Rosenthal.
Thank you very much. It's really important that those of us adults who are aware need to make sure that our young people understand and are aware what it is to respect each other. And one of the things that I want to point out is that everybody should realize that it's wrong to abuse somebody. You shouldn't yell at people, you shouldn't grab people by the arm, you shouldn't push people, you shouldn't hit someone, you shouldn't do any of those things. That's abuse, whether it is your date or your friend. You should treat them as a friend, you should treat them with respect. But one of the things that I think is really important that our young people understand is, when you do any of those things, you are violating the law. It is the wrong thing to do, you shouldn't do it. But understand, if you end up being... If the person goes to the police and lets them know, "He hit me," or "He raped me," you are very likely going to find yourself behind bars. You're not going to be able to get away with "I'm sorry" or apologizing. You will be dealt with appropriately. So I think it's important that our young people understand that it's just wrong. And at the same time, no, it's not the kind of thing that is forgiven with just an "I'm sorry." People should feel sorry when they do something wrong. They should regret it, they should understand that they should never do it again. But once you cross that line, you could find yourself behind bars. Just don't do it. Understand, just because the person is your friend, doesn't mean you're going to get away with it. Just because the person said, "Yes, I'll go out on a date with you," doesn't mean that when that date's over, they're not going to call the police, as they should, and tell on you, and let them know that you are an abusive person, and you hurt them. I think it's important that our young people understand, it's the wrong thing to do, yet at the same time, understand, it's not a game. This is serious. Every one of those actions is a violation of the law, and you will and can find yourself behind bars, and in some cases, doing many, many years of time, even if it's only your first offense. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal, followed Mr. Zine, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to do a shout-out first to Carol Tantow, who represents us in the 11th District, has been a stalwart activist on many community issues, and this one in particular. In years past, when I did a television show, we always did shows on domestic violence, and we brought people from the shelters and from various groups that do various things. The problem is, when you're living in an environment, it's hard to sneak out and tell somebody without getting beaten up, or getting retribution, or not getting the support system. So the awareness of today, which is an annual awareness, is more important for that lady or that man who is abused, and knowing that there is help, there are safe places to go to, there are good people that will be there for you. And that's number one, is that there is a way to get out of the situation, instead of us picking up the paper in the morning and seeing this horrific reality that comes all the time. Secondly, we need to appreciate that alcohol. Alcohol becomes a madness that brings out the aggressiveness in people. And we see so much of this tied to alcoholism. And so we need, when we deal with alcohol, and we deal with that issue, that somehow or another, we have to temper the reality that if a person is drinking, there's a potential problem. The third thing is around holidays. I have experienced this when I did my shows. Around holidays, sometimes, as the family gathers, and I mean uncles and aunts and cousins and grandchildren and grandparents, and they see a member of the family that has issues of self-esteem and worthiness that can lead to violence, or in the midst of the family is someone who is being abused. And here we are in October, the beginning of holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas, for a lot of people, become the time when families get together. And I say to everybody that obviously is sensitive to this issue, keep your eyes and ears open again during the holiday season. And if you see a member of the extended family that is either an abuser, or someone that could be abused, or has been abused, that's the time for us as family to intervene among our loved ones, and see if we can do something about it. Obviously, when we push the 911, or we go to a shelter, we've reached the limit where we must go. But before then, there's opportunities within that family mix to try to deal with an issue before it becomes a horrific situation. So I just want to bless everybody for, again, bringing the awareness up, especially Carol. You've had your hands over this issue for many years, can tell a lot of stories. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Madam President. And to the LAPD officers who deal with this every single day, congratulations, having the persistence, determination, the city attorney, the prosecutors. And I can remember, many years ago, being an LAPD officer, going to the family dispute calls, and not much would happen. Family disputes are domestic violence. And this public recognition, and the accolades to the people who are persistent in making this an issue for the public to recognize, to understand, to change, and it can be changed. It's not something that we have to tolerate. All the volunteers, the DART teams, and I remember when the DART teams come to Public Safety Committee, asking for funds so they can stay alive, because the funds are running out, and every time we have additional funding for that, this needs to be a priority and maintain a priority. To Patrick Healy, who covers many news stories in Los Angeles, who's seen the effects of domestic violence. I know the tragedy that recently occurred in Porter Ranch, where a man was having financial difficulties and killed his whole family, six people killed. With the tragedy that we see in today's economy, I'm sure a lot of people are going to be suffering depression, and the consequences oftentimes spin in domestic violence. People need to know there's opportunities for help. But the DART teams, the domestic violence, out there trying to make a difference. And I know from my experience as a former board member of Haven Hills Vattered Women's Shelter, and seeing how many groups are out there helping women, and I was a young police officer... No, I wasn't a young police officer, an older police officer, mature police officer. And seeing, 40 years is a long time to be in law enforcement, but to see what I saw, what I witnessed, and what the board of directors, and what the members that volunteer to help, help people understand there's a better way to go. And now broadening out to let the teens know there's opportunities. So to all of you, congratulations. And every year, we acknowledge this, we remember this, the bumper stickers on the police cars, "There's no excuse for domestic violence in Los Angeles, it's not tolerated." The earlier event with the mayor, the city attorney, some of my colleagues, discussing this issue, but Los Angeles needs to understand, this is not a city that tolerates. The city of the angels does not tolerate domestic violence. I know that Mr. Weiss has donated $100,000 from his office account to help clear up the backlog on the DNA of the samples from the rape kits. There's over 7,000 that are in collection that need to be analyzed, and we're feverishly working to get that done, so we can bring people to justice. But the bottom line is, we can turn this around, we can change it. And for all of you that are here every year, reminding us, and the command staff from the police department, the detectives, the rank-and-file, all people involved in this, to make a difference, to make a change. This is something we can eradicate, and working together will make that happen. So thank you for being here, thank you for Verizon, for the phones. It all works together, a unity in this community to rid this community, the city of Los Angeles with domestic violence. So keep up the battle, and someday, we'll be able to celebrate. We've obviously, hopefully, we haven't accomplished it yet, but hopefully someday we will. So congratulations to you all for bringing this to us again. Thank you.
Ms. Perry, followed by Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much, and I am so pleased that we are doing this today. And I want to remember the life of someone who was part of helping and protecting people, and he was Officer Ricardo Lizaraga from Newton Division, who actually intervened on behalf of a woman who was being assaulted, and actually did save her, and gave his life in the course of that in line of duty. But, you know, to be able to remember his life in a positive way, and to learn from that experience, and to understand how important it is to teach people how to recognize the signs of domestic violence, neighbors, family members, friends, so someone in that chain, someone in that community can actually call for help, and raise a red flag, and say, "I think there's a problem over here, can you come over and help us," so that no one else ever has to suffer like he did. And to remember what contributions he made is probably the best way that we can remember the life and the sacrifices that he and his family made. So I just wanted to highlight that, because it affected me so much that I still think about it, you know, almost every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
First, I want to thank you for this public awareness. You know, in some parts of our city, it's probably about four or five districts, we're probably at 30 to 40% at poverty already. Recently, we just learned that there are thousands of families in foreclosure now. And we are going through a very difficult economic time, but it's unfortunate that it's our most loved ones that get punished the most during this very stressful time. So it's important to have this kind of information out there. It's just as significant, given the international setting of our great city, many, many communities who come from different ethnic backgrounds don't always treat their spouses, in particular the women, at an equal level. And they're the ones that tend to be abused the most. And for them, I say, "Thank you," because there are many women out there who don't speak English, who come from different countries, and are essentially in a very, very difficult place. And to have a cellphone, to know that they can go to a local council, district, office, and pick up a cellphone, and know they have someplace to call, really gives them a sense of hope, because of just how much they've been beaten down. So for them, I say, "Thank you so much." I know it's once in a year that we make this a highlight, but it's something we should be doing every day, and for that, I thank you.
Councilmember Wezar.
Madam President, I just quickly wanted to again thank the Domestic Violence Task Force for the work you do day in and day out, and for being here today, to raising the awareness to survivors of domestic violence that there are resources out there available. And secondly, to remind those that may perpetrate or continue this unacceptable behavior, that the city of Los Angeles is paying attention, our officers are paying attention, and we will do everything possible to prosecute those who do commit this. And I particularly want to thank Chun Yen Chen, the executive director from the Asia-Pacific Women's Center, the work that you continue to do. When I sat on the board there a few years back, it reminded us, or reminded me, of the work we have to do to reach out to people that speak other languages other than English, and to make sure we have the resources available to them. And it also reminded me of how people want to help in this effort. In the shelter that we were building at the time, a lot of people stepped forward, but at the same time, the few beds we provided, it reminded me, and us, about how much more work we have to do to provide people with shelter if they need it at that time, when they need the help. So thank you to all of you, and to Chun Yen Chen in particular, and to the Asia-Pacific Women's Center for the work you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to add my thank you to all of you, and what you do every day, and to help those young women, and particularly those men and women who are teenagers now, to stop that cycle. I always tell the story about a young woman I met when I lived in Van Nuys, and I was driving down the street, and her boyfriend was beating up on her, and I screamed for her to jump in the car. She jumped in the car. I wanted to take her to LAPD, she didn't want to go. She did not want to go, she just wanted to be let off. And, you know, I tried to convince her, but she was afraid of what that would mean. And I realized then that there's a lot of education that has to happen for women to know that it is okay, and that they have choices. And we did send out LAPD to try to help her and make sure, because the gentleman was still there when I drove around the corner, she would not go back to that same location. But it's all of you who oftentimes interact with those individuals, either the perpetrator or the victim, and convince them what's the right thing to do. And so I want to thank all of you for your efforts, and for this team, and be able to expand it. And thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and all the council members, who clearly, this is an issue that is not just something that we think about on this day, but all year round, as our priority and funding. And with that, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Let's give a round of applause again to Patrick, and to Carol, and to Leah, to all of our officers, and the Domestic Violence Task Force. And let's do our work this month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And while Mr. Garcetti has his second presentation, I am going to ask that we run through the council... council agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weisar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and accor, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Yes, Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Zine seconds.
Next are commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
No, we'll go through the agenda, and then we'll go to our presentations and then back to public comment.
Items one through nine are items noted for public hearings. Items number one through three, the recommendation for council action is to continue the hearings and to present the ordinances on October 31st.
Those will go until October 31st.
Items four through nine are street lighting ordinances. Madam President, would you like to hold that for 12 members?
Yes, we are expecting 12 members. We would ask council members Alarcon and Weiss and Han to make their way down to the council chamber so we can take up those items. We just need one more member present. Thank you. Next items?
Next are items 10 through 16, and those are items through which public hearings have been held. The budget and finance report for item number 10 has been submitted.
Okay. Thank you. I know Mr. Garcetti wished to have item 13 called special. Mr. Parks?
Hold 10 till we get the budget and finance report.
Okay. 10 will be held on the desk. 11 and 16 for Mr. Weisar.
How you doing, Bernie?
Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll on the remaining items. I believe that would be 12, 14, and 15. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Items 17 through 18 are items through which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and Madam President, there is a card on item 18.
That will be called special. Anyone wish to call item 17 special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 17, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Madam President, the next is the special meeting.
Okay. If you could call the roll on the special meeting.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weisar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and accor, Madam President.
Thank you. First item?
Items 19 and 20 are items through which public hearings have been held.
Thank you. Anyone wish to call those special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 19 and 20, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
That brings council back to items called special.
Thank you. And Mr. Garcetti, for your second presentation.
It gives me a great pleasure, Madam President, to present to you one of Los Angeles's finest, a very familiar man to all of us on the airwaves, but also, just as importantly, when the cameras are shut off in the community, Ray Gonzalez, who has dedicated his life to one of service through his career as a journalist, as an activist, and as someone who has served not only Los Angeles but this country. We honor today one of Los Angeles's true pace setters. As Director of Community Affairs for KTLA, Ray Gonzalez has had his finger on the pulse of our community for more than 30 years, working in our community and with our community members to make Los Angeles a great place. He has inspired us, he has challenged us, he has cooperated with us, and he has pushed us to be better in this city. He coordinated KTLA charities for the Robert R. McCormick Tribune Foundation, through which he provided funding to organizations that provide educational, health, and human services to Southern California families in need. But before he joined KTLA, he worked at CBS as an assistant producer. For that, he served the United States Army from 1961 to 1963. But he brought all those experiences as a young man and as somebody who passionately loves this city to KTLA and to the community work that he did. He executive produced and hosted KTLA's weekend public affairs program, Pace Setters, which I'm sure many of us have been on before, where we were there to discuss local issues that might not always have gotten a lot of attention, but that really mattered to every day people's lives. And Ray was so gifted at asking the tough questions and making sure that this was a format where it wasn't just a soundbite, but where we could dig into issues and learn about them. And he was an example to the Los Angeles community, within the Latino community here in Los Angeles and throughout the United States. And he seems to have served on what seems to be every board or committee, including the Los Angeles County Human Relations Corporate Advisory Committee, Breathe California of Los Angeles County, the Los Angeles County Library Foundation, and the Advisory Board of the City of Los Angeles's very own LA's Best After School Program, where we know that he helped transform lives, save lives, and rebuild communities. And he just recently retired this past month. I was, sorry I was out of town, but our President Protem, Councilman Randy Grul, represented us all in force. I'm very proud to represent the KTLA studios. And I know that even though he has formally retired from this job, that he will completely retire from Los Angeles, but instead will continue to inspire and to be active in the community that he has helped to shape. Los Angeles simply wouldn't be the same without you, Ray. Before I open up to my colleagues to say a few words, and then of course we'll hear from Ray, I'd like to quickly introduce John Muzolsky, who is KTLA's Vice President of Marketing and Programming, and also serving as our interim general manager, to say a few words as well. John?
Thank you very much, Eric. Long before Randy Newman decided that I love LA, Ray Gonzalez said that he loves LA. Starting in March of 1973, Ray Gonzalez started contributing to KTLA and to the greater Los Angeles community. He is one of a kind. He is a true pace setter in the finest sense of the word, a true Angelino. Having been born and raised in the great city of Los Angeles, I've been able to enjoy Ray for many, many years and know that every day, in every way, Ray is out fighting for the community, and those who don't have as much of a voice mean just as much to Ray as those who sit in this chamber, who sit in City Hall, who sit in government in Washington. So I would like to represent the Tribune Corporation in honoring Ray and congratulating Ray on the proclamation here today at the LA City Council. Ray, congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Zine? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Madam President. Ray, every time I've seen you, it's been in that studio on Pace Setters, and you've been a gracious host for many years. I had the pleasure of being on the program a number of times, both in my former career as a member of the LAPD, as a councilman, and you've always been a friend. KTLA has a phenomenal history here in the City of Los Angeles, you're part of that history. And as you go into retirement, it doesn't mean you're going to leave Los Angeles, or the challenges that face Los Angeles, or the people that pull on your strings to say, we need this, we need that. So I just want to let you know that I too, like our President, missed that retirement at KTLA. I tried to make it there, but I was in the valley, it just didn't work out. But I'm glad I can say farewell to you at this time, and I'm sure that pension will be substantial, even though the stock market's down. KTLA is still surviving, still doing well, I hope. And you've just been such a gentleman in all the years that you've been involved in anything and everything with KTLA and the community of Los Angeles. So congratulations on this retirement. And honestly, you don't look any older when I first met you. You, and it's without that makeup. And I know you're going to make up, they put all that stuff all over you, but you've done well with it. So really, congratulations and bless you and your family, well deserved, in the future years of health and happiness. You've made your mark on Los Angeles. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Grul is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. And Ray, I was able to attend your wonderful event that you had at KTLA and to see all of your friends and family and the number of people across the city who have been impacted by you and your show and your involvement. And I think, you know, Mr. Zine said it best, you're a gentleman. And you know the issues, you rarely have to have notes to ask the questions because you've been so involved in everything, that your ability to feel the issue that is important of the day, to be able to talk to someone about what is important to them, to your involvement with LA's Best, which is where we first met many years ago, and your continued involvement with LA's Best, and KTLA's continued involvement, which we appreciate and its ongoing support, because that program has changed lives in the city. But Ray, I have counted you as a friend, a mentor, an advisor, and somebody who we look to for the pathway in which we must go and how to be a great resident and citizen of Los Angeles. And you are Mr. Los Angeles. We can't tell that to Tom Labonge. He's not here today, so we can say that, not in his presence.
Competition, yeah.
Yeah, he has a little competition. But you are a gentleman and a friend and have been an asset to the city, and I know you are not going very far at all, and your involvement will continue. In fact, retirement will just be the beginning of your next career here in the City of Los Angeles. So thank you to KTLA for sharing Ray with us all these years. He's become part of our family, and I want to congratulate you on your retirement and to your entire family. So we love you, Ray. We'll miss you at KTLA. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much.
And then Mr. Reyes.
Madam President, and God bless you, Ray, and congratulations on your retirement. I love watching your show because, just like Michael Jordan makes it look so simple to put a ball in the basket, when you're out there, you make it so simple to be a broadcast journalist. And also, you probably have as much action out there as Michael Jordan as you're moving around, and that makes your shows exciting. But like Ms. Grul said, you're also very informed. I remember going on your show recently, and we're talking about the Bringing Back Broadway Initiative, and you knew that place so intimately. You knew the theaters, you knew every street, and it shows how much you know about Los Angeles and that you really care about Los Angeles. And you not only showed that through what you were doing in your work, but your charitable involvement and your concern for our young people was evident throughout the city and all the organizations you were involved with. So thank you for that as well. We're going to miss you seeing you on TV, but we know you're going to be involved, and thank you for being part of this great city and for all your contributions. We need more people like you. God bless you again. Thank you, Ray.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gonzalez, it's an honor to be here, sharing these moments with you. I remember going through the 90s and 80s and looking at all these programs that you were laying out there, and the struggle in particular was in 187, the Proposition 187 came out, and the fury that we felt in the Spanish-speaking community when the Republican governor was, had the audacity to take away basic human rights for many, many people in our, in our society. And those were the kinds of shows that you did not back away from. And you put the pulse of the community in the public for everyone to understand what it is we were going through. Many venues would not address those intricacies, but you had panels of very informed people that spoke to these issues in such a way where we saw different perspectives, got to know ourselves as human beings as opposed to labels, and those are the kinds of shows that we need to continue. So Channel 5, thank you for that opportunity, for Mr. Gonzalez's abilities and skills to shine through and to give us all a certain base of knowledge that allows us to become a better citizens and a better country. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and I hope we can see more of you in the future. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President, brother. You know, when I did my show, as we both did, letting people finish their sentences, finish their thoughts, allow all points of views to be heard, to be objective, and to serve as a facilitator rather than be the star, that's a good journalist. You're a good journalist, you see, because it wasn't about you, the show, it was about the issue, it was about the person that you put in front of us to get to understand. Because we know knowledge is power, and we know in a democracy, the more that people know something, the stronger the democracy works. Unfortunately, when they got rid of the fairness doctrine in the 80s and made it all about making money rather than actually informing, educating, and connecting, people like you and me became dinosaurs within a reality where it was about money. If it bleeds, it leads. It's eyeballs, it's emotions rather than substance. That's why the American people with this economic crisis we're having right now don't know what to make of it. And all they get is hysteria on the tube, and we're trying to grapple with a real serious issue. So by you leaving, we're losing a treasure and an asset. And I say to KTLA, which I love KTLA, please, create half-hour and hour formats, forget about this dollar money thing, talk about the public service. The people own the airwaves, and they should give back. So here's your challenge. I retired from that world, and what did I do? Look at me now, I'm sitting around here. Come on, join us on the council. It's not just for kids, it's people with experience and understanding, integrity. Come on and join me on the council. Bless you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And that completes our list of speakers. Mr. Garcetti?
Well, let us present on behalf of the City Council, he lives in the South Bay, by the way, so we can all endorse him. He's not running against anybody if we decide to go that way. As I said to Ray, this council is probably as articulate as I've ever heard it in speaking to Ray, and I think that speaks volumes of who you are, Ray, and how you've inspired us. But I'd like to present this resolution signed also by the mayor and the city attorney and our city controller and the entire city council to, since Tom isn't here, I'll have to say it, an angel in the City of Angels, Ray Gonzalez.
Thank you. I feel badly because Councilman Garcetti said he was two years old when I started working at KTLA. So that, that shows my age. It's truly a pleasure to be here today. Madam President, Councilman Perry, we were involved with 1235 with Breathe California. Thank you so much for assisting us with that. The, Mr. Zine, what can I say? I remember you coming in and your motorcycle, just right up to the studio, and we do gallery show and Pace Setter show on that motorcycle of yours. And then we co-EMC the function in San Fernando until about 8 o'clock at night, there were only two people left, but we were there, still emceeing the event. And I remember Councilman Cardenas, when we did the shows on gang, and of course, I just had Mr. Parks on the show just recently. And of course, Mr. Weston has come in, who stole my emcee job with the Los Angeles County Library Foundation. He was so good, they don't ask me back anymore, Councilman. He was so good. Anyway, it's really a pleasure to, I truly thank all of you. I'd like to thank all my folks, the folks who came with me. Of course, my, the Vice President of KTLA Channel 5, John Muzolsky, just give him a big hand, everybody. Thank you, John. I'm still doing consulting work for at least three months at KTLA, my new boss, Vicky Prothrow, who was working with me, Vicky Prothrow. LA's Best, Carlos Sanger and her entourage from LA's Best, an organization that I love dearly. My buddy over here of Breathe California, we want to make Los Angeles, we wanted to clean the city and the nation, Enrique Chio. Thank you for the kind words. I love the City of Angels. So many of my friends and acquaintances leave the city once they retire, and I say, why? Of course, we have many of the urban issues that sometimes are difficult to endure, but where else can you see the many faces that represent our wonderful world? The rich languages and cultures that are within the proximity of all of our neighborhoods? The byways and the freeways that crisscross neighborhoods that, of the rich and famous, the middle class, the working class, the once-famous streets, the likes of Broadway, San Fernando Road, Sunset Boulevard, Central Avenue, and what can you say about Exposition Park and this wonderful museums, and of course, Griffith Park, the Coliseum, where Latinos crowds, at the Coliseum, where Latino crowds shout out, "Go!" And Dodger Stadium, the Staples Center, Live LA, the Los Angeles River. Mr. Reyes, I have an idea for you. Why don't we have a Los Angeles River concert? I got an idea for you. Okay? I want to pitch that idea to you, my friend. We have the LA River, we have the Staples Center, we have the Maya Theater where they salsa at night and raise their hands to the Lord on weekends. What else but LA, right? Oveta Street, Chinatown, Little Tokyo, Armenian Town, Thailand, you name it, the neighborhoods and shops all over the place, and more importantly, the people, the people that we love in this city, our civic doers, the community activists, the business and union representatives, and our young, young leaders, and of course, our senior citizens, all striving to make our city one big, beautiful city. I live in the South Bay, but Los Angeles is where I live, really, in my heart and my spirit. We want to make our city the best in the 21st century. And of course, the news media is very important because they make sure that we honor our responsibility of stewardship. It's very, very important. Ladies and gentlemen, we can't, I cannot leave here without saying, thank you, Johnny Grant, thank you, Hal Fishman. Thank you. Thank you, Larry McCormick.
Ladies and gentlemen, Roy Gonzalez, Ray Gonzalez is Ray. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Ray, for all you have done, and thank you very much, Madam President.
Congratulations, Ray Gonzalez. And before we go on to the next presentation, Madam Clerk... Ladies and gentlemen, Roy Gonzalez. Ray Gonzalez is Ray. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Ray, for all you have done. And thank you very much, Madam President.
Congratulations, Ray Gonzalez. And before we go on to the next presentation, Madam Clerk, would you please call the items that we need to have 12 votes on? I believe that is Items 4 through 10. Would you please open the roll on Item 4?
Madam President, real quick, for the record, just to let everyone know that the special meeting has been adjourned. And so, 4 through 9 are street lighting ordinances, and there are 12 members present now.
All right. Thank you very much. Would you open the roll on Item 4? Close the roll?
4 through 9.
4 through 10.
4 through 10. Close the roll.
4 through...
Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And those will go forth with... All right, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I'd like Tony De Clu and his family and friends to come forward, please. I'd like to start off by wishing Tony a happy birthday. It was his birthday yesterday.
Thank you, Councilman.
Happy birthday, Tony. Tony De Clu is retiring from the city of Los Angeles. His career here started in 1971 while in college at Cal State LA. Tony started working as an administrative trainee in the Department of Building and Safety. This was just days before the Silmar earthquake. Just goes to show, my staff is very young. They assumed that the only earthquake that existed in their lifetime or our lifetime is the Northridge earthquake. I had to cross that out. It was Silmar in 1971. The Northridge earthquake was '94. After he graduated, Tony was picked up as a junior administrative assistant in the Bureau of Sanitation Sewer Maintenance Division. He worked on their budget for one year and saved his money to go to law school. He had a slight change of plans and took a leave from the city and went to live and surf in Hawaii. This man's got his priorities right. He returned, I guess, out of money or just...
Out of money.
Out of money. Yeah, I'm sure it was out of money. He returned to the city in 1974 and resumed his career working at Building and Safety, the Department of Social Services, and Consumer Affairs, and the City Clerk's Elections Office. In 1981, Tony was picked up by the CAO's office and worked there through 1989. While at the Chief Legislative, Chief Analyst Office, he worked on the mayor's finance task force, on the city's first emergency operations organization, on budgets for the Housing Authority, CDD, CRA, and City Clerk, and on a number of special projects involving taxes and revenues. In 1989, Tony joined the Department of Aging as an Assistant General Manager. It's going to serve you well now. Good. He helped Aging resolve some major financial problems and put their budget on sound footing. He helped start a L.A.'s Local Meals on Wheels fundraising efforts. He helped develop the nation's first ethnically diverse senior meal plan. Six new meal patterns, kosher, Hispanic, African-American, Korean, Japanese, and Chinese were added to the standard meal plan. At the same time, it was a national model. Tony also assisted the development of Senior Transportation Program. After the 1994 earthquake, the next big earthquake, Tony helped organize a number of senior relief programs. In 1996, Tony was promoted to the Department of General Services where he worked for at least 12 years. He is now the last civil service Assistant General Manager in the city. Going by the way of the dinosaurs, this is the last one. Will never be seen again. Over the years, he has been an integral part of many projects and programs at GSD. He implemented major improvements of the GSD's security services, including better training, arming officers, better pay, and state-of-the-art headquarters. He handled the post-9/11 security improvements in the Civic Center, was a member of the city's Emergency Operations Committee. He worked closely with SEIU and custodial staff. He oversaw major improvements in custodial services, so much so that the GSD custodial team became more competitive with the private sector and actually was able to compete and win back contracts for those workers in the city of Los Angeles. He modernized parking services and increased revenues from $1.5 million to $6 million annually. That was a four-fold increase. Tony took over the city's Clean Fleet Program when Alvin Blaine became General Manager and has ensured its continued success. The city now has the largest hybrid fleet with over 1,100 sedans and has the largest municipal natural gas refuse and sweeper fleets in the nation, the largest in the nation. Tony has enjoyed working for the city of Los Angeles. He has had many different responsibilities, as you can see, and has worked on many important issues. Tony says that the hardest thing for him will be leaving the people he has worked with for so many years. He feels like he's a part of the family, and he certainly is. And he feels that he has been able to make a small contribution to the citizens of Los Angeles. I think you're being a little modest, Tony. You've made tremendous contributions to this city. Tony enjoys water sports, kayaking, swimming, fishing, and surfing. He was a soccer coach for a number of years. He has taught scores of kids to surf. He has traveled to England, Ireland, Mexico, Costa Rica, and throughout the United States. Tony recently bought a small motorhome. And on Monday, after he retires, him and his wife Lori planned on taking a leisurely trip through Baja until the holidays. He also plans on biking in the German wine country in the fall of 2009. And he has many, many other destinations on his bucket list.
Is that what you're calling it?
On his bucket list, such as Machu Picchu, the Galapagos, Easter Island, Fiji, Tierra del Fuego, and Mount Kilimanjaro. With that, I'd like to welcome, to say a few words, Tony De Clu.
I'm honored. I'm deeply touched by the things that were said today. First, I'd like to introduce my wife. She's been my main cheerleader and certainly a pillar of support through all these years. And I'd like to introduce my sons and daughter, Jenny, Drew, and Chris. They all grew up with me at City Hall. We can remember going to each of the Christmas festivities, and they got their pictures taken with all four mayors, Bradley, Bruden, Hahn, and Vergaraosa. And as they grew in the city, each one of them actually took a job in the city and worked at a part-time basis. I've loved the city. I've loved every single thing I've done about it and done with it. The one thing I would like to say here, though, all the things we heard today, really, the credit doesn't go to me. The credit goes to the people that are behind me, the men and women of General Services. How about a big hand for them? These are the mechanics, the construction workers, the plumbers, the custodians, the security officers. They're the people that make it happen. They're the ones that made all these fine things that you heard about really come to fruition. We just kind of helped them along. And certainly, they're the ones that have made this organization a fine organization in which to work. I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I've enjoyed every minute working with each of you. Ray, I remember working back in 1981 on the first international earthquake conference. And Wendy Grul, when she was in the mayor's office, I remember running some grant contracts up through her. Dennis Zine, you and I worked on, after the 911 fiasco, putting together a security plan for City Hall. Councilman Parks, he helped us organize our security offices. Each and every one of you helped me along the way, and I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure to work with you. After 36 years, leaving will be bittersweet. I'll remember the city long after I'm gone, and I appreciate the opportunities that you've given me.
Thank you, Tony. We appreciate everything you've done for the city. Long after people may remember what you've done for the city, the effects of what you've done, all the positive things of showing us how to save money, how to be efficient, how to do better by the public, is something that is going to live long beyond all of us, Will. So, I want to thank you for your leadership, your innovation. And once again, this is a fine example of what makes this country so great. When someone like Tony De Clu comes to work and ignores the fact that there's a paycheck coming every two weeks and just focuses on the fact that he is here to serve and to do the best job possible, to be innovative, to be creative, to push the envelope and make sure that we are what we are, which is a service to the community. Congratulations, Tony.
And Mr. Cardenas, before you do that presentation, Mr. Zine and Mr. Smith would like to say a few quick words.
Quick. I was just going to say, and my colleagues like to say a few words.
Quick. We're not going to rush now. Tony, the folks behind you, your family, your friends, your colleagues, your workers, you've done a lot for the city of Los Angeles for all those years. I'll never forget the call I got from you in 2001 when I was elected. You wanted to put my name on the door, and I said, remember, it's Councilman. And we discussed that whole issue. And I said, well, let's make sure that the ballot count is official before we jump to conclusions. But you were so gracious when people come into office, I think you were working in General Services at the time, to make sure that we had all the tools, all the resources we need to assume office. And I can remember back in 2001 when that took place. But you've been great. Anytime we need something, we call you. You're there, whether it be security operations. I know we had to do K-rails around this building after September 11th, and within a couple days, they were done. Your activities in the city have been tremendous. So, to your family, that I'm sure they wonder why you have to go to work at this hour and why aren't you coming home on this day, and why are you doing this and why are you doing that? It's all for the people of Los Angeles, and you've been a dedicated, dedicated person to the people of Los Angeles for all those 30, it was 36 years? I was trying to calculate that pension. You're going to be fine. Even though the stock market's down, you're going to be fine.
I'll survive.
Pardon me?
I'll survive.
You'll survive. But you've dedicated yourself, your family has gone along with it for all those years, and all the workers that are behind you, the team that helped make it happen. There's got to be a commander of a ship to lead that ship in the right direction. Obviously, you've done that well with your dedication to the people of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles. So, congratulations on retirement. And you're still a young man. You're still a young man. There's many retirement checks stored up for you. So, enjoy that. Your motorhome, wherever you gallivant with your motorhome. I know you're into a lot of physical activity. Now, you'll be able to do it and not have to worry about getting to work on Monday through Friday and anything that happens on the weekend. So, congratulations once again, and bless you and your family and many, many days of happy retirement to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine, Mr. Smith.
Well, as Tony mentioned, we met in 1981. I have a hard time processing all that information, but you were a young guy over at the CAO's office and came to work on a project called the First International Earthquake Conference. And with Tony's guidance, and believe this or not, ladies and gentlemen, it's true, with Tony's guidance and CAO's office, we actually made a profit on that venture, didn't we? The city of LA made a profit on something. That was remarkable. But also, you worked for a young gal named Marguerite Klein, and a couple of people have worked with Marguerite. And that's where you got all your gray hair, I know. She does that to you. But it was a great adventure, and it was a great opportunity for all of us to bring the world to Los Angeles, let them see what we're doing on earthquakes, and to tell us what we should be doing. And we're a better city for that. You mentioned in your speech that when you leave here, you're very satisfied with the things you've done. And I talked to you the other day, and you had this incredible breadth of things you got to do with the city of LA. And you were excited about all those things you got to do, which is a true mark of a guy who cares about what they're doing. They come to work every day excited about going to work because you know you could do some really cool things. And that's been your career here at LA. And you've done it with remarkable expertise and with great skill. And that's why there's so many people standing behind you right now, because they recognize your value as a leader here in the city and as a fellow worker. And that's... Look around you. I mean, there's a whole group of people, a lot of people standing behind you. That's a mark that you'll always carry throughout your life. As you look around, you help build this city. Your name's not on those buildings out there, but your name is in their minds and in their hearts. And when you leave this building, you know that you have a whole bunch of people that will remember you and remember what you did and are thankful for the opportunity to work with you. And that stays with you for the rest of your life because you're a really good person and you're a great success here in the city of LA. And we're sorry to see you go, but I know you got 36 years in, and I'm looking forward to doing the same thing very shortly. So, God bless you. Thank you for all you did for the city. It was a pleasure to work with you. You were always my go-to guy, and I'm really going to miss you. God bless you in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And I know the reputation is that surfers are kind of flaky folks sometimes, but you have shown that to be quite the opposite, that you are a surfer who has not only been able to be in tune and one with the sport and the world around you, but somebody who has driven this department and brought leaders up with you and been a joy to work with for me personally, for my staff. You have embodied what professionalism is in a department that embodies that as well. We are not going to be the same without you here. And I take back every bad thing I ever said about a surfer as a Valley boy. And I hope that you enjoy the waves that you have earned and you deserve. And I know you're going to be giving back to Los Angeles for years to come. But on a personal level, thank you, Tony, for everything you've done.
Congratulations. Thank you. 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 And as many of you know, the United States and Mexico ran a guest worker program from 1942 to 1964 called the Bracero Program, which employed Mexican workers in certain US industries, but especially in agriculture. I take special pride in leading this presentation today because my father was a bracero and I know all too well how hard migrant men and women worked in America, a tradition that continues today. When the Bracero Program first began, the Mexican workers like those you see gathered here today, we were, they were seen in heroic terms. They were part of the effort to fight the totalitarian regimes in Europe that are attempting to take over the world like Adolf Hitler and others. They provided the sweat, the tears and the arms and hands to make sure that our crops were picked in the United States and to make sure that our soldiers had their munitions in the time of war. But problems rose quickly. Reports of poor wages, deplorable living and working conditions were widespread. Many braceros in fact signed contracts written in English without understanding the rights they had given away, including a provision that the Mexican government will take 10% of their wages. The money was supposed to be given to the workers when they returned to Mexico, but many of these workers never saw a penny. By program's end, some 4.5 million Mexicans participated in the Bracero Program, working in the fields and railroads of America. About 4,000 ex-braceros live in Los Angeles County today and so their history is our history. The Unión Binacional de Ex-Braceros has worked extremely hard trying to recoup pension funds from both the Mexican and the American government. The good news is that recently the Mexican government agreed to pay ex-bracero workers living in the United States about $29 million. While it doesn't represent all the money owed to these workers, it is certainly a start and these workers continue to work with both the Mexican and American government to recoup all the wages that are owed to them. And I want to thank the Unión Binacional de Ex-Braceros for not giving up the fight for these workers and on behalf of my family and my father who passed away, I want to tell you it is an honor to stand before them today, to honor them for what they have done for this country and to support them in their continued struggle to recoup all their wages that they are due. Es un honor para mí estar aquí con ustedes hoy, como muchos de ustedes saben, mi papá también era bracero, trabajó muy duro. Y aquí estamos en este día, el 29 de septiembre, para celebrar el trabajo que ustedes hicieron por nuestro país, los Estados Unidos en un tiempo cuando se necesitaba. Y nosotros estamos aquí con su lucha. El Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles los apoya y me da un placer cada año estar aquí a darle el reconocimiento que ustedes merecen como trabajadores aquí en los Estados Unidos. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí. Gracias.
And now we're going to have Pablo Vázquez say a few words. Pablo Vázquez, ¿se puede interpretar?
No. Thank you for inviting us to this event. We don't have a school. We work all the time in the farm. We are farm workers, farm laborers. And we like to work in the farm. The farm is hard work. All the time it's 10 hours, nine hours. We never see the eight hours in that time. We work in everything, picking all kinds of fruits from the trees, all kinds of vegetables for the farms. And we are proud to be a help to the United States, to be, say, one of the best countries in the world. Thank you very much for inviting us to that event.
We also have Agapito Bustos.
Mi nombre es Agapito Bustos y estoy este día representando al presidente de la organización Lucha y Organización Social Ex-Braceros, 1942, 1964.
Can I interpret? You'll do a better job than I will, so why don't you interpret this one?
Mi nombre es Agapito Bustos y estoy en la presentación este día del señor Valdomero Capiz, presidente de la organización Lucha y Organización Social de los Ex-Braceros.
Okay, my name is Agapito Bustos. Agapito Bustos, and I'm here representing...
Estoy representando al señor Valdomero Capiz...
Valdomero Capiz...
...de la organización...
Of the organization...
...Lucha y Organización Social...
Lucha y Organización Social...
...Ex-Braceros, 1942...
Ex-Braceros, 1942?
1964.
In 1964.
Queremos darles las gracias...
We would like to thank...
...a todo el apoyo que nos ha dado el señor Weisar y...
And all the support that Mr. Weisar has given us...
...y todo el consejo de la ciudad de Los Ángeles...
And the whole city council of LA...
...y en nombre de todos los compañeros ex-braceros...
In the name of all my friends...
Gracias por toda la ayuda que nos han dado...
We thank you for all the help you have given us...
Estamos muy agradecidos con ustedes...
And we're very thankful with all of you...
Y gracias por todo...
And we give you thanks for everything.
Es todo, gracias.
Gracias.
De parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, me da un gran placer darle este conocimiento a los braceros en este día tan especial. Para mí lo que me motiva a estar aquí en la política, mi inspiración son ustedes. Cuando los veo sus caras me recuerda mucho de mi papá, de los trabajadores, gente humilde que somos nosotros, los mexicanos que estamos aquí ayudando a este país a ser el país número uno de este mundo. Muchísimas gracias de parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. ¡Y que viva los braceros!
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisar. Our last presentation, I believe, is, we have, Councilmember Weston, you did yours, right?
Not yet.
Oh, you have not? Well, we have a great presentation from Councilmember Weston next then.
I want to thank you, Mr. President and members. Today is again, come on around, get close. Today is one of my favorite days. It is Pet Adoption Friday. And what we have here is a beautiful little girl named Cookie, who's one-year-old. She's got her shots, she's been fixed, she's ready, ready to go. And people, I could even hear some people here go, oh, when they saw her, because it's nothing like having a companion animal. But we've had such great companion animals that they never make it from the back room to the council chambers without being adopted. So I'm proud to say that Cookie has a new mom who's Lorraine that works in the city clerk's office. Come on, come on up here. You can always tell when a dog is not going to make it out of the back room. And so I just want to introduce the new mom and daughter here. And for those of you that are watching on television, however, I don't want you to be too despair because we have several shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles, hundreds of companion animals just like Cookie. If you're interested, please call 1-888-452-7381. Again, that's 1-888-452-7381. Let's give the new mama and daughter a round of applause. Oh, wait here, let's, come on. Let's give one little shot.
Thank you very much. And let's hear it for the city clerk's office. We have, I think, one final presentation, which is Councilwoman Perry. On behalf of Councilmember LeBange is going to give a presentation. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'd like to ask members of the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging to join me. Come on up, everybody. And the Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services and, this is a long title, the Los Angeles City Department of Aging Needs Assessment is why we are here today for the campaign called the LA County Seniors Count. They have been honored with an Aging Innovations Award by the National Association of Area Aging, Area Agencies on Aging, this is like a tongue twister, it's N4A. The 2008 N4A Aging Innovation Awards recognize aging programs from across the country that provide successful, cost-effective approaches that help older adults live independently in their homes and community and provide needed support to caregivers of older adults. And on behalf of Mr. LeBange, I am also proud that the Los Angeles County Seniors Count Needs Assessment has been recognized nationally for its progressive approach to helping older adults to live more comfortable lives. As a result of this assessment, the department has a clear path on what local seniors have identified as their needs. I would like to recognize the following individuals who were involved in seeing this project to fruition. And then we'll ask a representative of the group just to say a few quick words. Now, the award was given jointly to the Los Angeles Area Agencies on Aging, which are the County of Los Angeles, Department of Community and Senior Services, and the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging. Individuals involved in making the project happen are Natalie Ambrose, and why don't you raise your hands as I call your name out? Natalie Ambrose. Cynthia Banks from the county. Amos Freed, senior advocate. Marilyn Freed, member of the Commission on the County of Los Angeles on Aging. Jake Glassman from the County of Los Angeles. Rochelle LeBlanc, management analyst from the City of Los Angeles. Alex McSwain, County of Los Angeles, senior analyst. And of course, our own general manager, Laura Trejo, City of LA Department of Aging. Bernard Weintraub from the county. Judith Zatkin, community member. Valentin Villa, professor from the School of Social Work, Cal State. Deborah Sheets, a nurse from the Gerontology Program at Cal State. June Simmons, CEO Partners in Care Foundation. And Kathleen Wilber from the University of Southern California School of Gerontology. And now I'd like to invite Representative Laura, if you will, and if you have a county counterpart, would like to say a few words, come up to the mic and say a few words.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman. We really appreciate the opportunity to share with you this award. I want to introduce my colleague and a person who really gives a wonderful meaning to the work cooperation and collaboration, Ms. Cynthia Banks from the Los Angeles County Department of Community and Senior Services.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the County of Los Angeles, I just want to tell you that we feel honored to be here today to talk about the collaboration that the city and county has done to help our seniors of our county and city. We sent out over 100,000 surveys to the seniors and we now have an idea of how to plan for the needs of our seniors in the future. We are approaching a population boom of boomers and we need to prepare for them. And so the effort that we took on in a collaborative method will allow us to do that. Thank you so much for being here. And I'd like to introduce to you the chair of our Needs Assessment Committee, Marilyn Freed from the Los Angeles County Commission on Aging.
Thank you, Cynthia. Just to let you know, I'm in Councilman Smith's district. I want to thank you all for honoring us today. It was a long process. It took us three years to complete the survey and write the report. And as Cynthia said, we now have information that we can use to make the lives of our seniors better. And now it's up to us to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, and let's give them a big hand. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. That will end our presentations. Do we, we already took the votes on the 12-member items that were being held? Is that right? Okay. So we'll go to general public comment right now. Our first person is Walter Bechtel. Each speaker has up to two minutes and time cannot be yielded unfortunately to another speaker. And if, folks will just watch the clock, we'll have two minutes per person. Good morning, Mr. Bechtel.
Good morning, thank you. I wasn't going to come back in, but I wanted to reiterate something that I said last summer, last July, to Mr. Weiss about his people concerning copyrighting intellectual property. I wanted to apologize because I wasn't trying to say anything about Jewish people. I have a lot of Jewish relatives of my own in my family line. I was talking about the Morris Levi Group and the Erwin Kishner Group, people we know that were involved with the mafia, especially in the copyright area. I have a lot of entertainment people in my family and I was trying to say something to mention about what's been going on there. I still haven't had anybody from the Police Commission talk to me yet. Mr. Dawson was told, I was told he was going to talk to me. It's been two years now. Nobody has talked to me about this. I think you people need to understand that, you know, if the law isn't equal for all of us, then we're starting to set up a situation that we'd gotten away from with England there and we're only handing our country back into those powers that we thought we'd gotten away from. But again, all I came up here, I just wanted to reiterate and apologize to Mr. Weiss. I'm not a Nazi or anything. I don't have any Nazi leanings or feelings like that. I just wanted to say that I recognize that these things were coming from some of his people, that he also understands that kind of situation too, so.
Thank you. Peter Thaddeus is our next speaker. And then Randall Cox will be next after that. Good morning.
Hi. Look, I'm here on behalf of...
It picks up quite well, so you can actually stand just normally and we hear you, don't worry. We'll hold your time, don't worry.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Yesterday, on Thursday, the market fell by another 700 points. Today, in the morning, when it opened, it was down by 670 points. The US stock market is down a total of 42% in the last year. The unemployment rate in Los Angeles has skyrocketed from 5.8% last year to just under 8% this year. It is predicted that it's going to go up by another two percentage points. City council members, what I've seen you doing here today is mostly engaging in presentations and rewards. You're not addressing the fundamental problems, the concerns of people throughout Los Angeles which are growing. And I'm talking about jobs. I'm talking about jobs. I'm talking about jobs, health care, and about helping the people of the city, right? They're seeing their employment go through the floor, they're seeing their opportunities go away. They are seeing a federal government, a state government, and a local government that's increasingly in the back pocket of corporate America, of Wall Street, of corporate big wigs, of fat cats, all right? And now the federal government has shifted a trillion dollars' worth of debt obligations onto our shoulders, our children's shoulders. And you, you city council representatives, haven't shown that you are recognizing the gravity and the seriousness of what's unfolding. The streets of Los Angeles are increasingly filled with people that are homeless. There is drug dealing that's rampant on Main Street, on Broadway. Downtown is a desert. The developers were wrong. And the tax subsidies that were given to them are going to cost this city hundreds of millions of dollars in the years to come. Do something. Get off your feet and do something. Legislate. Act as the elected representatives that you are. Act in the people's interests. Do it now.
Just before our next speaker, and Mr. Rosendahl wants to say something, a couple of things. The 15th, we have one council meeting specifically on the budget. We had a number of meetings this week. The legislation that was passed on the homeownership relief was done because of lobbying from this council. We went to Washington, DC. So I just wanted to correct the record on a couple of things. Nobody's sitting on their feet. We are taking this extremely seriously. We're the front line of when people come and they're homeless. We're the front line when people say that their power is being cut off and their energy is being lost. So just wanted to make sure that you knew some of those things are going on. You can follow all those at lacity.org, read the agendas of our housing committee, read the agendas of some of our budget and finance committees, and you can come here on the 15th too if you'd like to. Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President...
Sorry, the 21st, I was correct.
You said it all and it's just very clear. We are in a very, very serious, dramatic crisis. I can tell you my own personal story about 401Ks and my brothers and everybody else. It's a very, very serious issue. It's not over yet. My first bit of advice to all of us is to participate on November 4th in the political election and let our voices be heard. Secondly, there are people like Brad Sherman who I admired for coming out against that package back there. Those federal hysteria manipulation, I find appalling and disgusting. I really believe that the little guy was left out of the picture and the bandits frankly were rewarded again. My hope is, is that the super tax cut for the super rich is rescinded and they pay their fair share. And I also personally believe we should be out of Iraq before it started, but get out the next day, save the lives and save the money. Frankly, I obviously admit, all of us on this council believe in investing in our kids' and education, our transportation infrastructure, and our health care. It is unbelievable that the insurance company's still struggling.
Excuse me, Mr. Rosendahl, this is not on the agenda.
Anyhow, just to let everybody know, the council isn't sitting on its butt. We're frustrated like you are and we want to see change and we really want to see a big difference happen. That's where we're all at here.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is, Randall Cox is our next speaker, and after that is Chuck Neuss. Good morning.
Good morning. The $850 billion, billion, $850 billion Wall Street bailout has been called a financial 9/11, the controlled demolition of our economy. Another inside job? Did the White House look the other way as a soon-to-be blackmailed Attorney General from New York, Spitzer sounded the alarm of the attacks about to occur? Now a representative, Brad Sherman, has disclosed that Congress was threatened with martial law in the US and the bailout bill was not passed. Let me humbly warn the LA City Council that unless you act now in whatever capacity you... you have to protect your own citizens, that you risk becoming as irrelevant as another congressman on the Homeland Security Committee, Peter DeFazio, also against the bailout, who is forbidden from seeing the continuity of government plans that are in store for us and who has said maybe the people who think there's a conspiracy out there are right. I want to tell you of an incident that really strikes fear in my heart and that took place at the We the People Festival last month in State Historic Park. By order of Mayor Vera Goza, three invited speakers were at the last minute forbidden from going onstage for fear of a riot and anti-government views. What is unpatriotic about a mother Cindy Sheehan, who lost her son in an illegal war, offering the only change that our sister city can see when a Democratic Congress and House Speaker elected to stop this madness is impotent? Is a former Congresswoman Cynthia McKinney unpatriotic, running for president on the Green Party for grilling Donald Rumsfeld about $2.3 trillion missing from the Pentagon and war games taking place on 9/11? And Jack Blood, a popular radio show host who intended to bring a young filmmaker onstage with him? And I barely have time to mention Vera Goza's trips to Israel and turning over our port security and our water to the very firms who failed us on 9/11 and were in charge of security at the airports on 9/11 where the planes departed.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments. Chuck Neuss is our next speaker. After that is Thomas Teltzer.
Hey, thank you, City Council, for hearing us. My name is Chuck Neuss, and I'm with the madassailnetwork.org. We need your help. Our federal government has screwed us. They allowed predatory lending to some prime borrowers and then let the investment bankers package this fragrant garbage into securities, and we are seeing the results of this economic implosion. The stock market has dropped 42% as Peter Thotham said, and I echo everything Peter Thotham said. We are going to need humane help from our city council. Herbert Hoover is justly vilified in history as a person who protected the big-money interests at the expense of the American citizen. It now seems that a worldwide depression may be inevitable, and we will have Bushvilles, the successor to Hoovervilles from the last depression. This is not about right and left. It's about right and wrong. In Chicago, the sheriffs have recently said they are not going to evict anybody. They are going to stop evicting people. This is a humane way that we can help homeowners and people. We would like the city council to create a resolution asking the federal government to be fiscally responsible, humane, and to help homeowners, to help people who need health care, and to get back to the business of representing we the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thomas Teltzer is our next speaker. After that will be Judy Kaminsky.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to make a comment here today. I too am extremely concerned about the bailout. I think part of the reason that everybody here is so frustrated is it seems that Washington has abdicated their role in leadership. I think we, many of us, have seen this over the last eight years, and they did the same thing. They've got this emergency, and instead of trying to deal with it in a sensible way, which may have included a bailout, they've used it opportunistically to force through a type of bailout which is agreed upon by the majority of economists to be poorly made and really made for Wall Street. And I think that we have to figure out what we want as a society. Since Washington's not doing it, we're looking to you all to step into the vacuum. You know, we're going to have to, we the people have to take back our government, and it starts with locally. And you guys have to take a stand and speak to them. I mean, if a company is too big to fail, we've got to break them up. I mean, if it's too big to fail, but it's, you know, if it's, we're either in a capitalist system or socialist system. I don't really believe in this whole, in we privatize profits and we socialize losses and we pass on this religion of free market when we don't really have a free market. If we're going to have a free market, let it be free. If we don't have a free market, let the government serve the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Judy Kaminsky. After that is Cynthia Williams.
City Council, my name is Judy Kaminsky. I'm also with madassailnetwork.org, and we're protesting the manner of the bailout. We, the taxpayers and voters, need your help. We are inevitably sliding into a depression and probably a worldwide depression. Looking ahead, I'm afraid. All the citizens are terrified of losing their homes and their jobs. The taxpayers are amazed that the federal government has so much money to bail out investment companies that have made unwise decisions and created huge losses to their shareholders while they always say they don't have money for things like affordable housing, health care, and education. The taxpayers deserve a full hearing outlining the full range of options to this crisis that is the result of irresponsible practice and policies. We need your help. We are asking you, the elected representatives, to join the people, the voters and taxpayers, to help us to get a new deal, not the current raw deal being thrown upon us by all the investment bankers and lobbyists. We want our government to remember that Franklin Roosevelt brought us out of the depression not by bailing out the banks, but by, but bailing us out the people. We need a bottom-up bailout, not a top-down trickle-down plan. We are asking you, the elected representatives, to join we the people in crafting and passing a local resolution calling upon our congressional representatives and the federal government to pass bills requiring foreclosure relief, WPA, Workers' Progress Administration, and a new deal. We, the citizens, deserve this, and our new generation deserves this. Please, we deserve better. Please help us. Please think of the new generation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia Williams is our next speaker. After that will be Arnold Sachs.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I wrote, I phoned, I told my congressional representatives no to the bailout. It's not our citizens' responsibility to be saddled with these costs, this debt. Our children, our grandchildren, are already in debt head over heels for their lifetimes with the war in Afghanistan, Iraq, illegal invasions, troops dying, a million Iraqis dead. I told them to get Wolf Paulson out of the hen house, our treasury. He is death in conflict of interest, and as a former CEO of Goldman Sachs, he should be indicted. No hearings are necessary. Utilize the paperwork that he presented for we the people to swallow. That's sufficient. Make him, make him responsible. Make him pay. Through planned and purposeful deceitful diligence, these Wall Street despots, through knowingly poor choices, made themselves wealthier. Paulson worth over $700 million. It's more than I've got. Let those who made such decisions, fired with greed and power needs, reach into their own deep pockets and pay for their own poor management. Our body of Congress held a secret meeting March 13th, 2008, only the 4th in the history of this country, discussed the imminent collapse of the economy in late 2008. Isn't that where we are? Number two, the imminent collapse of the system mid-2009, imminent martial law for all citizens of the United States, civil war due to the collapse, and a safe haven for Congress and loved ones due to the collapse. Yes, Congress knew? Absolutely. For far too long, we've been subcontracting our task as patriots to professionals, to lawyers, scholars, activists, politicians, and let them worry about understanding the Constitution, protect our rights, because we're too busy. Get involved, please.
Thank you very much. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Gilbert Salcedo.
It's Arnold Sachs, and then Gilbert Salcedo will be next. Very quickly, since the bailout seems to be front-setter, I'd just like to point out today's, or yesterday's newspaper, one of the problems with the bailout and helping these companies, Wachovia spending $440,000 on a getaway for its executives, AIG spending over $400,000 on a weekend getaway for its executives, they're just getting bailed out. It's the arrogance of these companies. It's the arrogance of the leadership of this country and this council that allows this kind of behavior to go on while the public, the middle class, slowly gets its legs eroded away from them. People are coming here asking for this council for leadership. Man, that's like asking Charlie Manson to decorate your house. I would like to also point out, though, that things do happen. This was an editorial from the Downtown News, Civic Center Blight Demands Immediate Action. They wrote about the area on Temple and Hill and First Street, and the good news is that they trimmed the weeds at the government, the corner that the government owns, where they're going to put the county courthouse in the year 2080. And I'd also just quickly like to ask a question. On the 8th, there was an item on your agenda regarding funding from Prop A for the L.A. DOA and the NF, for a job grant for the aging. It came from Prop A. In Metro's last board meeting, there was a heated discussion regarding funding for a flyer sent out regarding Proposition R, the half-cent sales tax. There was two Prop As. Could there be clarification here from somebody from Metro regarding which Prop A this funding came from? And no on the half-cent sales tax?
Our next speaker is Gilbert Salcedo. After that is Alex Taitik.
Hello, I'm Gilbert Salcedo, and I'm a concerned citizen. I'm very concerned how the federal government is handling this huge financial crisis we're in, and so I urge you, the City Council of Los Angeles, to pass a resolution requesting the federal government to provide immediate, direct relief to homeowners who are in foreclosure. The federal government has already approved a $700 billion, which has turned out to be an $850 billion, package to help in commercial and investment bankers, but yet has done nothing to help the homeowners who are in foreclosure. It is a disgrace that the federal government is willing to give so much money to these bankers without helping the people who have been victimized by their deeds. Assisting homeowners who are in foreclosure is not only the right thing to do morally, but also economically. At the root of the financial crisis is the avalanche of home foreclosures, which has created mountains of nonperforming assets in the balance sheets of most financial institutions. By helping these homeowners cure their defaulted loans, we will be converting nonperforming assets into performing assets. This will go a long way to solving the financial crisis we're in. The $700 billion that we provided for the tech, for the Wall Street, is a shameful theft of taxpayer dollars. Our congressional representatives violated our trust and defied the will of the people. There has been expressed opinions and by overwhelming majority of the people against this bill, and the Congress decided to go ahead anyway with it. We demand, we must insist that the federal government respect the will of the people, and we must also demand that our taxpayer dollars are used to address the root of the problem rather than reward the few super wealthy individuals and corporations who created the problem. So I urge you to cast a resolution to reverse—
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Salcedo, before our next speaker, just as a point of information, we had a really good hearing. I know some of this stuff is tough to sometimes find, but we had a very good hearing in our Housing Committee specifically on the Homeowner Foreclosure Prevention Act, which was something that we went directly to D.C. and lobbied on, worked very closely with Maxine Waters on. We successfully got about $33 million for the city of L.A. alone, which is not going to be adequate, but we're going to go back, and we'd love your help on that. That will be something that's going to be coming here, and the Housing Department could provide you. We'd be happy to connect you with the folks that are working on that with Mr. Frank's office and Mrs. Waters' office. Alex Taitik is our next speaker.
Good morning, L.A. City Council. I am here today to tell you, actually, to tell the public, a great story. A great story about the L.A. City Council and everybody who was involved in stopping the pollution of the L.A. River. I have a little background. A couple of years ago, I came to the council with findings that a horse, the L.A. Equestrian Center had a football-field size pile of horse manure that was running off into the L.A. River and during the rain. I documented footage of this, and I took pictures, and I found evidence that this was definitely a violation of the lease for the equestrian center and therefore brought my case to you. And I'm here to thank you today. I'm here to thank Eric Garcetti, Council President Eric Garcetti, for adopting this beautiful resolution right here. I love it. It's gorgeous. Thank you so very, very much. I'd like to thank Mayor of the City of Los Angeles. I'd like to thank the Controller. I would like to thank Nate Holden for mentoring me, and I would like to thank Tom LeBonge, Councilman of that district. But more than anything, I'd like to thank Jan Perry, Jan Perry with a horseshoe, for being tough, and this is a hind horseshoe, okay, for the hind leg, for a horse that kicks hard and gets a job done and demands respect. You will wear it. Yes, you will wear it, and I'm sure you will, because Councilwoman Perry really came through for the city, and I know that I don't have a lot of time, but I just, you know, there are so many people that I'd like to thank. And if I have to come back to do that, then I will, but—
Thank you.
The river is better off, and I want to thank everyone from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you so much.
Nice to see you, and thank you for your activism on that issue as well. We're pleased it was positively resolved. Alvaro Maldonado is our next speaker. After that is Judd Nelson. Good morning.
Good morning. I appreciate you paying attention to what we have to say. I've been unemployed since last year, and I'm reflecting many, many more that probably in the millions that will be, right? It's hard to find work now. I appreciate that you're listening. It really, really does make me think that you care. Listen, you know, I'm not trying, I know you have your views as to what's happening, but, and I know you know that the public out there is quite outraged, outraged of this $64 billion that managers and CEOs, you know, awarded themselves and virtually looted people's money that they invested. They've looted that, and it doesn't pass the public. The public could see that. Now, we're not arguing that you're not thinking about it, making, you know, this problem, you know, that you're not thinking about this, okay? What we're saying is that you did not come out in a statement opposing that bailout, that $700 billion. You did not come out, okay? That was looted money out of our hard-earned, working-class money to the wealthy, when we have no jobs and all the devastation. And what's also occurred to us activists out here is that we are going to be the ones that are going to organize this horrible catastrophe that's going to come down on us probably by next year. We're going to organize a response, and the masses, I see he's laughing, this guy thinks it's funny. It's not funny. You know, I'll tell you, we're going to be out there, and I'm sure Labor will come out and others will come out, and we'll be, we'll do what, we will be able to organize a response to this, because this is going to impact people horribly, okay? And so that's what we're going to do. But you guys, excuse me, I'm using the term, but you guys did not come out against that robbery from the tax. You didn't make any statement about that. That's not going to pass anybody, that's not going to get by. And we, you know, and we know Obama and McCain and both parties and all that, they support it as well, too. It's not going to escape most people. We know—
Thank you. Judd Nelson is our next speaker, and then Jody Evans.
My name is Judd Nelson, and I'm here with madassail.org, and I'd like to put into the record a reading from Webster Tarpley's recent post. "We must respond to the disintegration of the globalized world finance system with a concerted campaign for the re-industrialization of the United States using the most modern available technology, along with a rebuilding and massive upgrading of the national infrastructure. The ultimate goal remains the complete nationalization of the Fed and a return to constitutional legality. The power to create money belongs to Congress, which cannot transfer or alienate that prerogative by a mere statute like the Federal Reserve Act. There is also the little matter of saving the taxpayers hundreds of billions of dollars year in and year out. Under the current system, the JP Morgan Chase borrows Fed-regulated Fed—" Under the current system, the JP Morgan Chase borrows Fed-regulated Fed funds at 2%. And JP Morgan Chase then turns around and lends the same money back to the Treasury for 4% to 5%. This spread is often even wider. And the difference between the Fed funds rate and the interest rates on Treasury bonds is an outright subsidy to the Wall Street banks for doing nothing, pure gravy for the financiers. If the Fed's currency issuance function were brought back to the Treasury, the taxpayers could save an average of between 2% and 6% on Treasury borrowing compared to the current system, which would save hundreds of billions of dollars on the bloated U.S. national debt." The U.S. federal government, if only it is properly managed, is the most powerful institution in the known universe, and it surely does not require the services of bankrupt derivatives sinkholes like Chase, Citibank, and Bank of America. Once the Federal Reserve has been nationalized, we will save literally trillions by having the government lend itself, lend to itself, without these parasitical Wall Street middlemen getting in their way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Appreciate your comments. Jody Evans is our next speaker. And after that will be Enjo Lane. Good morning.
Good morning. So we're here in our costumes of hens and foxes and feathers flying to illustrate a horrific situation. The Congress has been given $700 billion to the Paulson Fox in the henhouse of the American taxpayer. And we would really like the City Council, who we recognize, to be responsible and respectful of the dollars, the taxpayer dollars of the LA citizens. We watch you here, you know, really trying to pay attention, and we would like you to take that attention and that responsibility and call on that to the federal government. That how can you have sat here and let that happen? Politics is local, so we're here in front of you to say, we want to hear your voices. This is going to come to haunt LA in ways that I'm sure you imagine at night. I'm sure right now that you can feel what's about to hit you. And so don't wait. Don't wait for the election to happen. I mean, they've gotten away with this before. They took away our rights with the Patriot Act this way. They took us to war and have cost us a trillion dollars already. If we, if you, the leaders that people look up to, aren't speaking out as we're watching hysteria and hyperbole and fear-mongering take place, they don't know where to stand. They need leaders to stand up and say, there is somebody that cares about the needs of the people. And we're not asking for a resolution. We're just asking for your voices. We're not hearing them. You may have done something, but we need your voices out there saying, this is wrong. This is wrong. We have a fox in the henhouse. He should not be there. He does not know what he's doing, and we're watching conclasse happen, and your voices will have wanted to be there when it comes to roost in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jody. Enjo Lane? And then Clay Claiborne.
Good morning again. I will be very brief. I will second everything that has--
Can we get a little bit closer to the mic so we can hear you better? Thank you.
Sure. I am really concerned. I've lived in Los Angeles and worked in Los Angeles and Los Angeles County for many years, and primarily I've been in public health nursing and pediatric nurse practitioner. We have a city of young people who are going to inherit the worst possible gift that we can bestow upon them. I think our City Council, our representatives who we voted for are capable of using some really creative means during this crisis and actually coming up to lead our National Congress and speak up for the children. We all have to live here, and we've got parents here. Let's go at this crisis as responsible parents who will be accountable to the next generations. And I appreciate your time, and we're all in it together, so let's do the very best job we can. Thank you.
Well, it's another day, another 500-point drop in the dial. Clearly, this country is in economic crisis, probably the worst crisis since the Great Depression. And with that in mind, we can see what's coming. Before I came here today, I heard an amazing thing on MSNBC, something I never thought I'd hear on network news, a discussion of the topic. Is this the end of capitalism? Well, that's an amazing question, but it's one we have to address. I would suggest that, to some extent, we're already seeing the end of capitalism, because what we seem to have now is a system of private appropriation and public debt. When there's money to be made, the capitalists and the financiers and the war profiteers take it and put it in their pocket. When their long odds fail, they come to the public coffers. They'll us out. I would love a system like that at the racetrack, at the casinos, wherever, but I don't expect it, and they shouldn't either. It's clear democracy has gone in this country. That should have been clear in '06, when the vast majority were opposed to wars that continue now. And when the overwhelming, probably 95% of the people oppose this bailout and it goes through anyway, it's clear that the voices of the people aren't being heard. I can only hope that it will be heard here at the city councils, here at the local governments, and that you stop penalizing the homeless, you stop trying to kick people out of their vans, and you see to the needs of the people of this city, because they are going to need you in leadership more than ever in the times that are coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sharona Smith, followed by Donald Olinger, followed by Zuma Dog. Sharona Smith? Sharona Smith? Okay. Donald Olinger? Olinger? Okay. Are you Sharona? Okay.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Sharona Smith, and thank you for having this forum. I don't even know where to start. This morning, I found out that Neo Kajumari, basically the bailout czar who has $70 billion of our U.S. taxpayer, is not going through Senate confirmation. I mean, the balls of that not happening. How can a man who's six years out of business school not go through Senate confirmation hearing? I have lived in South Africa when they had apartheid. I was part of a team of people that went to the Soviet Union after central planning to get the financial system going. And let me tell you, this is where we are right now. When we have journalists getting arrested at the RNC, when we have no say as to what's happening to our congressional dollars, we are no longer a democracy. When the City Council here does not issue a statement that says, we don't agree with the bailout, we are no longer a democracy. I don't know what else needs to be said. Franklin Roosevelt said during the Great Depression, when he looked out, and I'm paraphrasing this man, when he looked out, he saw a third of Americans not clothed, a third of Americans not housed, and a third of Americans not fed. That is where we are going. This government has allowed an economic collapse that will be on an international level. We came in here in the summer of 2007 and asked you to do a resolution to impeach Bush. This could have been avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Olinger, followed by Zuma Dog, followed by Nile Edwardani.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to appear and exercise this democracy that we have. I would say to the LA Council that it is time that you took a stand and passed a resolution, or at least that we heard your voice against the madness that is going on in Washington right now. You can no longer stand by while these lying SOBs, for lack of a better term, usher through our Congress what one member called "the biggest act of class warfare in the modern era." This insanity has got to stop. They are running our country into the ground, and we are feeling the effects right here in this city. I thank the City Council for resolutions and actions it has taken to help people in need, but we need to hear your voices more strongly on what is going on in Washington. We no longer really have an effectively functioning democracy. And if you want to know really what they're up to, I would refer you to the work of our own native son, Michael C. Rubert, and his fine book, Crossing the Rubicon. This will give you a clearer idea of what they're really up to. And if you need further information, I would refer you to Zeitgeist the movie and Zeitgeist the movie, The Addendum, which just premiered recently here in LA. These will give you an idea of what's taking place in our country, which is not in our own best interest. We spent millions on 9/11 security reactions that were basically wasted money because there was never a threat externally to us. We need you guys to know what is going on. If you don't know, you'll be held culpable at the polling places. You must find out what's going on in our country and take a stand against it.
Thank you. Zuma Dog, followed by Nile. There's one person before you, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Zuma Dog from Zap, Zuma's Action Plan. Nice to see everybody here. You know I've been here the past year. Warning, you all got to admit, I predicted this to the T. So a lot of people right now, I do care about wealth preservation of everybody, even my opponents. People are wondering, gee, has this bottomed? Is it time to buy discounted stocks? Are we getting bargains here? Absolutely not. Don't touch it, okay? Gold, yes, the economy will be collapsing, a controlled collapse. Not only will banks be tumbling, but, you know, an international monetary organization like the World Bank will have to come and take over the U.S. debt. It's coming to that. You've heard me talking about the Zuma Dog, five dollars. Okay, I got the Economic Business Development Zone, my task force, Economic Development Task Force. It will be coming tonight to Highland Park, Casa Princesa. I would like to invite all council members to attend. 7:00 PM, it's going to be a Zuma Dog event, karaoke, Zuma Dog review. And here's what you can do for $5. We have hard economic times, no joke, people. So I had the concept for the whole city, $5 Economic Zone. This is what you can do for the holidays for $5. Hannah Montana stickers. Check out this nice Pepsi truck. Beautiful Legos. It's a, you can make little Lego trucks for the kids. By the way, when I say $5, I mean for all of this. A Rubik's Cube, these little neon little things, and a can of slime. So for this holiday season, you know, kids, kids are the one thing that are going to be recession-proof. Please come out to-- Um, excuse me, Dion. Excuse me, I'm talking about--
Self-promotion really is not--
I am offering the city the opportunity, through nonprofits, if they would like to participate in my Zuma Action Plan, to deliver, when kids are going to be shut out of Christmas, to save Christmas for kids. Here's what you can do for $5. I know the city wastes so much money. That's why we're in this problem. I'm here to create leadership, to do something about it. Tonight at 7:00 PM, Casa Princesa, York and 45th Avenue, where Highland Park meets Lassell Park meets Eagle Rock. Thank you, and you can buy some $5 gift packs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is-- Excuse me, Nile Edwardani. Following her will be Maureen Cruz, followed by Matt Dowd.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've never been here before. It's very interesting. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate everybody's comments, including the last one, because I think we have to actually start thinking about the people in this country. Has anybody ever thought about what you could do with $700 billion? Well, I started thinking about it this morning. Did a little calculation. If the government gave $1,000 every single second, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, on CNN or NBC, and they asked, say, Eric Garcia, it's your $1,000. Mr. Reyes, it's your $1,000, every second, it would take 22 years to give away $700 billion. If we gave it just to the people in this country, there are 300 million people in our country, and we give it to every man, woman, child, and infant, we could give each person in this country $2,400. And it would take eight years to give it away, and what a great PR stint it would be. It would be on CNN, NBC, everywhere. Every second, somebody's name would be called. It would take eight years. And what would that do for our sinking economy? $2,400 to every person in this country? I'd say it would do much more for our economy than giving this money to the corrupt and inept bankers that got us into this mess. So let's get creative here. Let's get creative. Did anybody ever think about doing something like that? If we can produce $700 billion, why can't we do this for the people in this country to get our economy going? And what I want to know, too, is we could house all the homeless with it. We could give, provide health insurance for every child and every person over the age of 50 in this country for their life. Let's think about what $700 billion is, and I must insist that you follow this up, be creative. We need you overtly to oppose this bailout.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maureen Cruz, followed by Matt Dowd, followed by Donna Pearman.
Looking around the room at the various conversations taking place while citizens come to speak, tells me that I need to remind the City Council people, first of all, I'm a political activist. Secondly, I'd like to remind the City Council of what Louis Brandeis of the Supreme Court said. He said, "In a democracy, the highest office in government is citizen." And shame on every last one of you chatting your way through this meeting. That's to start. And I will remember you, that's for sure. Another very important person, Martin Luther King, said, "There comes a time when silence is betrayal. This is that time. If we do not say that what is taking place now is wrong, our silence says that we agree with it." We are asking you, our representatives, to be our voice, to represent the citizens of Los Angeles. Tell the federal government, on behalf of your constituents, that a bailout with the people's money must benefit the ordinary taxpayer first, the average citizen so brutalized by the crimes of Wall Street operatives. A patriot does not allow his government to destroy his country. That's Mark Twain. Be patriots. Everyone sitting here is a patriot. I'm not sure about all the people chatting on the sides of the room. Represent our interests, adopt a resolution informing the federal government and their corporate cronies that the city of Los Angeles does not support any plan, resting on the suffering and the backs of the families of the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Alacon? Before we go to our next speaker, Mr.--
Thank you.
Mr. Alacon?
The applause stopped. I think it's important for the public speakers to know that one of the first things the council did was a motion, a resolution, passed a resolution against the bailout. Now, it wasn't the second bailout, but it was the first bailout, but it certainly had the sentiment that you are carrying in it, and was very clear and very strong. So I thought you should know that.
Yes, Mr. Cardenas, before we go to Mr.--
Thank you, council member. I'll let go and point to clarification. The city of Los Angeles City Council has been a voice on this issue, opposing the bailout even before Congress voted on it, when Paulson and the president first introduced the idea. Secondly, we have had a committee hearing, which is not the last, to discuss not only how that affects the city of Los Angeles, but how all of that works or actually doesn't work. So the fact of the matter is, for those people who are just watching today, please understand that these voices that are speaking are not falling on deaf ears. We have been doing what we can in our position as a city of Los Angeles. We are not Congress, but we do have a voice.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd, followed by Donna Pearman. Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, thank you so much, Matt Dowd. Good to be back, Channel 35. See, here's the problem with the economy. It was going too good. Too good. Way too good. Everyone's like, oh, yeah, let me buy this house and this apartment and build these condos. And see, they're all holding the can now. You let them build them all, and they're all empty. So ha-ha. See, that's the beautiful thing about a free-market economy. It's going to fix itself, and it might be painful and tough, but the $700 billion, it's not gone. They're buying things with that $700 billion, hoping to get something back out of it one day. So I don't think we need to hold the government responsible for this. Even the City Council, this City Council is not responsible, right? I don't think-- I don't think anyone should be saying anything to Los Angeles, except you're going to carry your own can for all the development and the condos down here. But as far as the economy, the national economy, it's personal responsibility now for the American people to take a hold of their own finances and not live outside of their means. And that means don't buy these iPods and all these things that come through Long Beach here in Janus Hahn's district and come up the 110 and on those container trucks. All those Walmarts and everything, all of that stuff, see, that's where the money's going. It's all going back to China, and they own America in a minute. They're going to own America. Thanks, George Bush. But it's not even his fault. See, I mean, they could have regulated, but everyone wants to have a free market economy. See, and I've been here five years, I never once asked the government for a thing. I was looking after myself down at Venice Beach with a federally protected activity until the city of Los Angeles came and rode roughshod over me with LAPD. And there's a case in New York, you can look it up, called Master of Vincenzo. It says, "Only a judge can rule your First Amendment, not the police or municipality."
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Our next, Donna Pear- Mr. Dowd, Ms. Pearman? Nice to have you downtown.
Good to be downtown. Anyway, I completely agree with all these people in the fallout, but I didn't come for that. Anyway, President Garcetti told me recently that the city council are a great group of people, and I actually agree with them. They ran for city council seats because they care about constituents as a whole. They have a vision. I disagree with that vision, some of their goals and ideas. It's, anyway, like, it's with a heavy heart, I talk about Prop B. I'm sure that the CM's endorsing it, feel it's great for low-income people, but I see it's a huge apartment complex is built by you-know-who, the CRA, making huge, huge ugly apartments after they're done with it. Now, listen to the people who know about, don't have any, don't have any vested interest. Anyway, you know, it's the CR making ugly apartments after they're done with it. Usually people are tended for, unless it's only 5% to 10%. I say no on B, and I say, and I hear the people have no vested interest. No on the gain tax. It's an open-ended credit card, can really afford to give millions to spend a little for a night basketball, and house after-school programs, going to prevent gang activity. Are we supposed to take care of everyone's children, do a parent pick them up? They misspent money before, and they'll do it again. Vote no on R, it's disaster in the making, for a long time to build the red line, which people have to take because they cut out the buses. Everyone loves the subway. No, they don't. It'll be a disaster if you close Wilshire Boulevard and any means strength for the subway to the sea. I'm sorry, Mr. Del, I disagree with that, with you on that. I'm sorry, Mr. Weiss doesn't care about Westwood or West L.A. And Richard Sipner says, who's one of your constituents, doesn't like you. And he wants, anyway, I can tell you anything, endorsed by our mayor as suspect. I cited when he got voted in, I seen it's hard to get rid of, now I see it's time to get rid of him. It's a vision that's killing us. Let's take L.A. back. We, the people, for the people, by the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment. Madam Clerk, next item. Oh, yes, Mr. Garcetti?
Yeah, just a point of information. We obviously can't campaign for, against different propositions that are here, but as a point of information, Prop B, which is on the ballot, there's a misconception that it changes the zoning. It doesn't allow anything that is any higher today, it doesn't actually change the zoning. All this is, if there's something that is allowed to be, let's say, 40 feet today, where everybody in the community's agreed to that. Right now, the city of Los Angeles can only accept money from the state for projects that would be shorter than that. So it allows that money to stay in Los Angeles instead of going to other cities in the state. It truly is kind of a technical correction. I think there's been a misperception that it busts height limits, that it changes zoning, and I just want to say as a fact that it doesn't change zoning at all. So whether you're for it or against it is absolutely up to you, but, but it doesn't change that at all. So I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 13 was called special by Council President Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank, thank you very much, Madam President. I called this special, even though I know we will get a unanimous vote on this because of two reasons. One, the economic hardships that we face today, this is a great example for a lot of the folks who came in here, talking about jobs, jobs, jobs. This is an example of something that is squarely for our small businesses here in Los Angeles. We lobbied to expand the state enterprise zone, which is tax credits for small businesses and other businesses that create new jobs. And what we did successfully is we've been able to expand this business zone to be able to go into Echo Park, which is the second reason I called this special. As I mentioned on Wednesday, Echo Park was selected as one of the 10 best neighborhoods in the United States to live in. It was a great honor that the American Planning Association bestowed on our neighborhood. And we've been walking door-to-door in Echo Park to talk to the businesses that are there about the tax credits that they're leaving on the table. This is an example of where there's federal and state money oftentimes, that we literally leave on the table. And in tough economic times, it's even more important that we get that word out there and that we know that the struggling small businesses that are there, that they can put money back in their bottom line at a time that they're seeing their business turned down. So I called this special to get that word out there. There are enterprise zones that are throughout the city, there's some that are in South Los Angeles, Hollywood, San Fernando Valley. But now, if you're a business that's in Echo Park, by passing this today, we will accept what we successfully lobbied for from the state, which is to get those tax credits to help people with new jobs, to make sure that we can get people who are unemployed back to work, and we can make those small businesses that are in our neighborhood hang on in very difficult times. So I urge your support, and if you want any information, please call 311. They will connect you with the Community Development Department, who can walk you through, with your accountant or anybody else, how these tax credits can help your business and can help you hire people in the neighborhood. It applies specifically to, to people who are hired from, from our neighborhoods, instead of getting labor that comes from other cities, that is from other places. It helps people in our most oppressed areas get jobs in their own neighborhood as well. So I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. You would open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item 11, that was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer?
Great, thank you very much, Madam President. And my questions have been answered on this, but while I have the floor, I just wanted to announce that this is a very important development in our goal and vision to develop a biomed corridor on Valley Boulevard between Bull Heights and El Surino. For years now, we've talked about a merger of the Adelanta East Side Redevelopment Project along with the counties, so that we could better govern the development of this site. And we will have a report back from the CRA in 120 days about the city and county's efforts to reach agreement on governance and funding. This item has been, this issue has been talked about for a number of years, and we are a very critical and important point today, and I think this is a good thing for all of Los Angeles to make the city of Los Angeles a center for biomed development and firms to come locate here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
And I'll be brief. I just wanted to rise to congratulate Councilmember Weezer on this. This is a huge, huge deal. And we had, you know, a good, long-hour discussion on some of the things that are happening across the country, and I agreed with what was said before us today. But I also know that it's just important, and I know that there's conversations going on in the back, but for some of the folks that came in, this is an example of how local government cannot be powerless, how we can actually take our own destiny in our own hands. Mr. Weezer knows that the, one of the few places we're going to see job growth in the next decade or two is in biomed and biotech. Los Angeles has done a lousy job in the past, we've seen those jobs go to San Diego, up to San Francisco. And Mr. Weezer is not only making sure that they're going to be here in Los Angeles, but he's putting it in an economically challenged area. This is an example of where redevelopment law works. It can work for the people and can bring not just, you know, low-wage jobs, but high-wage jobs, some of the most economically competitive jobs. So I wanted to congratulate Mr. Weezer on this merger, working with the county and the city together. Again, in tough economic times, another great example, and congratulations on the work that you and your staff have put together to make this happen.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Next item.
Next is item 16, and that was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you know, in my audits in Governmental Efficiency Committee, we've been working to provide some staffing to the, to our commission, the Quality and Productivity Commission, who's doing great work to advise the city council on ways we could be, the city, that is, on ways we could be a lot more efficient. Unfortunately, they don't always have the staff available to do that. And this item here is giving us some information about how to go about it. I want to thank Councilmember Zine and his crew from the committee for helping us in this effort. I'll recommend that we adopt this report, but I do have a report back from the CEO, if possible, I know they're here, that if the CEO could report back in response to this item with a special emphasis on feasibility of using productivity incentive revolving fund as a way to permanently fund staffing for the Quality and Productivity Commission, provided that it identifies at least as much money in savings as it uses for staff, if we could ask for the report back, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item 18, and there's a card on this item.
Thank you. We do have three cards. Donna Pearman, followed by Arnold Sachs, followed by Zuma Dog, and Matt Dowd.
Donna Pearman. Anyway, it's, on the fee waivers, it's not necessarily events in itself, it's the importance, that it's the things that are wrong, and it's, oh, it's the important things that are not done in Los Angeles that are not being addressed. They say, "We have no money." I can see what their presentation, city council stands behind good organizations, but we can't afford to keep waiving these fees for all these frivolous events. In the meantime, people are being homeless, and in the meantime, crime is going up, and you still waive these fees. The worst being the 12th Annual Oktoberfest for $17,762, and the 6th Annual L.A. Decompression Music and Arts Festival, $5,000. It's not that these are bad events, that, but the private entrepreneurs can pay for these fee waivers and get publicity at the same time. It's a win-win situation. We must have other avenues to pay for these fee waivers. We can't keep on doing these things. In the meantime, you make everything go up. You make our trash fee go up, you make the gas and electric go up. Every time we turn around, there's another fee, and then car permit fees on parking on streets, they're going up. That was over in the West L.A. area. So we need to stop doing these fee waivers, and, or otherwise, this city will really go bankrupt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you very much. Since Councilman Parks is not here, and he didn't bring his entourage of religious leaders, I am calling for a moratorium on any events that are scheduled for Sundays and Saturdays. As we've heard previously before the city council, the fact that the L.A. Marathon is run on a Sunday and is not conducive to having high attendance for churches, and we had four members of the religious leaders come before city council and say how important it is to change the date of the L.A. Marathon, even though anywhere from approximately 5,000 runners participate in this marathon, and there's marathons in every city throughout the world, only in L.A. can four religious leaders come before the city council and have them bend over and say, "Yes, we'll do it for you," because it's not-
Madam President, the speaker should use phrases that were, are within the decorum of this body, in the chambers.
Which phrase did I use?
Official warning.
Which phrase?
Please go forward.
Which phrase did I use that wasn't in decorum with this, oh, well, excuse me.
Please go forward.
Stand straight up? No. But necessarily speaking, it had nothing to do with the fact that Frank McCourt is taking over the L.A. Marathon. But anyway, again, we need to have a moratorium. If the religious leaders in this city can find fault with the L.A. Marathon at four, four areas of worship, then any event that the city holds on a Saturday and Sunday should be held under the same kind of scrutiny, never mind the 6,000 people that, that take part in the marathon.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zuma Dog?
Yes, I'm here today to talk about some very important things. I've been, Zuma Dog, he tells you time and time again about the special event fee waivers and the money that is wasting, that is coming out of the general fund with not enough services to be provided, and the unemployment money running out, and not enough trash removal, and all these things. And I say today, I had to come down here, okay, to address city council, because I don't like Zuma Dog. He calls my phone all the time complaining about the things with the money that you'd be wasting, and I'm here to say, I want to see, the governor had to come down, I have to see a no on all these special event fees, because it's wasteful money, that is wasteful spending that we don't have time for in these types of situations, and it comes out of the general fund, and this is all just street fairs and festivals and parties and all kinds of things that are not non-essential. And if I had to sign off on these, I would be vetoing all of these special event fee waivers, and you should be ashamed of yourselves, and now I've got all kinds of problems, and now I've got to go ask the federal government, because we don't have enough money to run California anymore, and we know that Los Angeles is the main economic hub of the state, and so you need to think very hardly, quickly, and fastly about not approving these things only for very, very essential things. Now, sometimes you have a nice little event for the community that is supposed to be free and open to the public of benefit, with some of those things, if they're very important, especially for the kids and the elderly and the disabled and the homeless, well, some of these things still need to be going on. But for the most part, it is a completely waste of money, and I hear that it could be also racketeering, and it could also be corruption, and you are outside of your jurisdiction when every day you approve all these things for the purposes that are not rightly entitled for. And I just like to say, when I have to call George Bush for more money to provide these services, I'm going to say, "Don't put the money into the districts of L.A. City Council, because they build way too much density without enough infrastructure, and they don't listen about the water crisis, and it's wasteful, and so you're going to be on your own city council, and it's going to be, I'm going to have to make a sequel called Mad Max 2, not with Mel Gibson, but with Arnold Schwarzenegger, and it's going to be about what the L.A. city is like, and vote no on all of these things and all of wastefulness."
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Hey, thank you, yes, it's great to be here with Arnold Schwarzenegger, Channel 35. He had to come down to city council, the fee waivers are getting out of control, but let me, let me just run my eye over them for a minute. See, this is, this is the, the Jack Weiss memo from 2001 that took seven years now, showing some effect. But see, that, these people talk about the $700 billion bailout, and, and they think the city council's going to do something, but you, you're experts at not doing anything quickly. In fact, waiting is your specialty, and let's wait before we release anything, and let's see what happens, let's have a committee, let's do some consulting and some environmental studies, and, so, you know, I'm just impressed that we, we got to the point where we're getting some of these commercial events to reimburse the city, like the Garcetti-Zine Morning Light premiere. But what's the, how come the My Friends Place Open House? See, that's the one I want. That's, that's Bill Rosendahl, in fact, I'm not allowed to address him, I'm not allowed to address you, please. You know what I want, is, I'm going to have my own special event, I want one of these. My Friends Place Open House, I'll just, one of My Friends Place, we'll have an open house, and we'll get $1,600 from the city to have a party with Eric Garcetti and Dennis Zine. So, anyway, I want to say hello to all the Pacific Breeze people down at Venice Beach, Matt Dowd, we're doing performances and shows down there, that's a special event.
It's not related to the item we have before us. It's special event motions that are before us.
Okay, well, I'd like to make it a special event. How do, can somebody come, in fact, you know what? There were no council members listening to the public comment, but it was good, because there was a lot of outreach going on. That's what they were doing, they were talking to the public.
He's still not within the jurisdiction.
That-
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. If you could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Madam President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred?
Madam President, there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember LeBonds requests to arrive at 11:30 a.m. on October 21st for city business. This meets policy.
That will be accepted.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on November 21st for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Zine seconds.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have announcements, colleagues? Any announcements?
I'd like to make a quick announcement, tomorrow at our Valley Plaza Park, starting at 10 o'clock, is a Child Health and Safety Fair. We welcome people to attend. There are a number of free events that are happening there. Child safety issues with bicycles, bicycle helmets, police and fire are there, entertainment, a number of our medical institutions that are there, so we encourage everyone to attend if they can at Valley Plaza Park tomorrow.
Yes, Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, we might also remind everyone that the Congress of Neighborhood Councils is meeting tomorrow, I believe it's here at City Hall. What time is it starting? 9 a.m. So, want to be involved, or you are involved with Neighborhood Councils, they're having their annual congress here at City Hall tomorrow, starting at 9 a.m.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Zine?
Good evening, President. 10 a.m., Los Angeles Fire Department Annual Memorial Ceremony at the Fire Department Museum at 1355 Cowenga. The public is invited, the memorial for our fallen LA firefighters, and, let me see if there's another one here. There is the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum Partnership Walk at 9:45, LA Memorial Coliseum Partnership Walk at the Coliseum.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Just as a reminder, folks, we do have the camera in the back for kind of community-oriented meeting announcements, so we can take that and make sure we have those run as PSAs as well. So, with that, we, do we have any adjourning motions today? If I could please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. Mr. Zinnall, you have a-
Yes, you know, I say every time I read one of these that we only have the moment. On Monday, I got a phone call from one of my constituents that another constituent had heart issues and that he was in the hospital, and that it would be okay, he was going to have bypass the next day. So I called him en route to an event that we were getting a million dollars from the late Howard Rollander for the YMCA. And I called him, and he was in the hospital, and he said, "Don't worry, I'll be fine." I went to the event, and I started my speech by saying, "Let's have a moment of silence for his health." Well, unfortunately, he passed away. So I was one of the last to speak with him, telling him what a great guy he is and how much the community loved him. So this gets so personal, and all there is is the moment. His name is Jim Hill. For more than 30 years, Jim served his family and his community through his involvement with AYSO Soccer and the Westchester Family YMCA, and the Westchester Rotary Club, and the Westchester High School Boosters Club, and the Pacific Division Boosters, and many other community organizations. His contribution was immeasurable and will be impossible to replace. Jim and his wife Jean raised three daughters, Amanda, Allison, and Andrea, in Westchester. While the girls were young, he coached their soccer teams and participated in the YMCA Indian Prince, Princes Program. When his girls reached high school, Jim became active in the Westchester High School Booster Club, where he was an officer for more than 10 years. He was the founder of the annual pancake breakfast and the Rotary Club's representative in the Internet Club. And speaking of that, you know, we're doing one for Brett Loveland, the fireman that passed away, this Saturday in memoriance of him, and Jim played a role in putting that together. True to his character, Jim also organized an annual poker tournament that raised thousands of dollars for college scholarships. For Jim, family values and community service were two sides of the same coin. The scores of projects he led and thousands of hours he dedicated to his community were simply part of raising his own family. In doing so, he made family life in Westchester better for all families, and we are profoundly grateful. He's survived by his wife Jean and his three daughters. The funeral arrangements have not been worked on to figure it all out, but Westchester is mourning him this morning. May Jim Hill rest in peace.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of John Red Zar, who passed away Friday at the age of 88. He was a second-generation Croatian-American. He was born in San Pedro, and it was there that he began his baseball career at San Pedro High School. Upon graduation, he signed a contract as a pitcher for the Yankees, where he flourished until World War II called him to duty in the Navy. In 1945, he moved back to San Pedro and began coaching a number of local Pony League teams, as well as coaching at Mary Star of the Sea. In 1989, during San Pedro's Centennial Year, Red was honored as one of the 100 greatest athletes to come out of our town. He was excited that this coming Monday, he was going to be enshrined in San Pedro's Sportswalk to the Waterfront Ceremony. It's so unfortunate that he did not make it to see this great honor of his hometown. He is survived by his wife of 63 years, Mary, his sons John, Anthony, Andrew, and his grandchildren.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Mrs. Eleanor Duffy. Some of you knew Mrs. Duffy and her daughter, Mary Duffy Peterson, who served as press deputy for Councilmember Nick Pacheco. They were active in Eagle Rock in 1989. She was named Pioneer Woman of the Year for the 14th Council District. She was a great lady, and I was very pleased to have known her in the involvement that my office has had with the Eagle Rock community. Eleanor Tubilio Duffy was born 88 years and one month ago, on September 3, 1920, in Rochester, New York. She married James Duffy and made her home in Eagle Rock, where they raised their family and made their mark on our city. Eleanor was a pillar of the Eagle Rock community. She loved Eagle Rock, and Eagle Rock certainly loved her. She was a well-respected businesswoman, a community leader, and fixture in local politics. Because of her strong spirit and dedication to causes, Eleanor was often asked to serve her city, and she did so with great gusto. Under Mayor Bradley, Mayor Riordan, and numerous city council members, Eleanor served on commissions and boards, including Wreckin' Parks, the Greek Theater, Cultural Heritage, and Children's Nutrition. She was a beloved member of the Eagle Rock Chamber of Commerce, where she served as a board member and helped revitalize the business community in Eagle Rock. She was a founding member of the Eagle Rock Seroptimist Club, Seroptimist Club for Professional Women. She was active with Women's 20th Century Club, as well as Blend and Lace Booster Groups that help our Los Angeles Police Department. Alongside her brother Peter, she enjoyed being a member of Orders of Sons of Italy, and she actively supported the Christopher Columbus statue on the Los Angeles Mall and Italian Hall at El Pueblo. Eleanor was a longtime benefactor for the causes she believed in, and she had a very special way of bringing people together to reach a common goal. She wasn't afraid to take a stand, which led to her active role with the committee to save the Rock, when the community's namesake landmark was nearly destroyed to make way for condos many years ago. And she was quick to recognize the good in people and encourage them to do even better regardless of labels, man, woman, Republican, Democrat, businessman, or housewife. Eleanor inspired people and cultivated friendships regardless of who you were or where you came from. When redistricting occurred in the 1970s, Congressmember Edward Roiberg became the new representative for Eagle Rock area, and he came to Eleanor's house to introduce himself. She liked what she heard as they got to know one another, and being a good Republican, she proudly threw a big welcoming cocktail party for the liberal Democratic congressman, and they were friends for many, many years. Eleanor was charming, witty, and smart, always ready to share a bit of wisdom from her experience or just the latest news about one of her children or grandchildren's achievements. Eleanor survived by her beloved children, James Duffy, the Honorable Marine Duffy Lewis, Mary Duffy Peterson, Sheila Duffy Lerman, her brother Peter, her grandchildren, Ryan Lewis, Callian Lewis, Eric Peterson, Jonathan Joshua, and Alexis Lerman. Certainly, the community of Eagle Rock is going to miss her, as will the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alan H. Stein, born February 5, 1927, Chicago, Illinois, to Ben and Fanny Stein. Alan, a 57-year resident of San Fernando Valley, moved to Southern California when he was 14 years old. After he married his beloved wife, Mickey, in 1951, they lived out their dreams in the San Fernando Valley. Alan was a proud Navy man and served on the USS Iowa during World War II. When he spoke of his ship, his eyes would fill up with tears of pride, having served on her. But his most proud moment is when Al's gals called him Yayo, his nickname for grandpa. Those girls are and were the light of his eyes. His son Leonard, survived by his son Leonard, his daughter Deborah, son-in-law Chuck, three beautiful granddaughters, Al's gals, Mara, Christie, and Carrie. His beautiful great-grandson, Presley. Al was preceded in death by his loving wife of 45 years, Mickey, and their son Mark, who are both, he was both devoted to. Alan H. Stein, may he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. One final adjourning motion. We had an accident in Atwater Village on Wednesday at 5:00 p.m., a driver of an SUV struck an elderly person that was crossing at Edenhurst and Appleton on a motorized wheelchair scooter. The victim was 75-year-old Bienvenido Medina, and he was struck and sustained serious bodily injuries that he succumbed to. The driver saw the, saw him on a wheelchair approaching the intersection, but since she had the right of way, she continued through the intersection and struck and killed him. He was a longtime resident of Atwater Village, great man, and somebody who will be sorely missed by his family and the entire community. Reminds us to always, always let pedestrians, including those who are on motorized wheelchairs and in wheelchairs, have the right of way. With that, if we can please call the roll, and we'll next be in session on Tuesday, the 14th. We wish the-